For the folks online, we've got about ten minutes and we'll go live.
They've already told me what you're asking, so that's basically what I'm asking. I can show you what you're asking. You can't tell to me. That's what we feel. It's based on this. It's a sense of stress. I think a question of stress. Is that a possibility? They give a speech and move that area from the old screen. No. As it is. I want to get you up to the safe space. Come on. This year. Yeah, it's like, I need some of this stuff. Come on. Twenty-five hours. Right. Stop. Turn in the ground. Public. How's this? Well, it's just like a rush.
Um, that's where we.
That's been my definitely. It's just put a mask. We're gonna get a concert, yes. You have a minute. Interesting. It's good. Yeah. But I actually work. But I actually work. Did I have to work? I would just say. If they're. Well, no. Okay. They go. Yeah. Okay, I don't. That's all I'm saying. I hear what it says. We'll talk about. No, far as said. Trying to be someone. Your eyes. Yes. And they all did. So has everything. Which is the. Marketing. 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 I mean, I have to. That's right. Jack. It's why. It doesn't have. I'm indeed. This is why. And. Comes up. It's happening. Yeah, yeah, there's something like that. So. They're all. They take. So hard now. It's not all the same. So what? I'm going to. Content very bases.
All right. Lights on, flip it up.
Thank you.
All right, uh, thank you all for coming. Um, I want to call to order our November third, twenty twenty-five meeting of Scotland County Board of Commissioners, and I'll ask Commissioner Edge for invocation.
All right, may we bow our hands to pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today. I pray that you will be with us during our time together and that you would help us make the best decisions possible for our community. Be with our county and with the citizens we seek to help. As we are the voice to those who are voiceless, I pray a hedge of protection around our community for us in your name I pray, amen.
Thank you. If you'll stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, our first matter is an approval of the agenda, but there's an item that has to come off number six, which is the, uh, NCACC Legislative Delegate. That's not done this year. That's done every other year, um, because they only do it every other year. So that's, I would say that that's the only change on the agenda. Um, so with that, I would need a motion to approve. Oh, make a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, time for our public forum. Ms. Tyson, we don't have anybody signed up. Does anyone want to take the three minutes on the public forum? Seeing nobody making a mad dash through the microphone, I'll say no, and we'll move on into the consent agenda. Uh, need a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
Second, motion in the second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, introduction of our Health and Human Services Director, Ms. Sneed.
Yes, sir. So, uh, we want to introduce Mrs. Amanda Holland. Uh, Ms. Holland is not a stranger to Scotland County. She was born and raised in Scotland County and has worked for Scotland County before, uh, coming back to us. So, uh, she will be, or she is our new Health and Human Services Consolidated Director, started last Thursday, and, uh, we are glad to have her.
Well.
You want to raise your hand or?
Yeah.
And for some reason, this isn't working.
This isn't working.
Award our slides.
Okay, you're working on that though, right?
I'm, uh, Watson, sorry.
Is that for April?
Yes.
I guess that's a try that. All right, um, anyway, we'll move on to the next item, which is the Monarch Mobile Crisis Presentation. Tanya Locklear and Kimberly Lincoln, if y'all come on up to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I'm Kimberly Lincoln. I'm the Vice President of Crisis Services for Monarch Behavioral Health.
Hi, I'm Tanya Locklear, uh, Mobile Crisis Team Lead.
And I don't know if we're going to be able to use our slides or not.
She'll have to do it from over there.
All right, perfect. Um, so we, uh, represent Monarch, um, and the Mobile Crisis Team that services, uh, Robinson, Bladen, and Scotland Counties. Um, and as I said, I'm Kimberly Lincoln, the, uh, Vice President of Operations for Crisis Services. Um, so Monarch is committed to supporting, educating, and empowering people with, uh, developmental and intellectual disabilities, as well as mental illness and substance use disorders. Um, and so we serve actually all one hundred counties now of North Carolina in some capacity with our services. Um, we were established in nineteen fifty-eight, uh, and we are one of the leading providers of behavioral health services in North Carolina, um, serving more than thirty-one thousand people annually. You can go to the next slide. Um, so our Mobile Crisis Management Services, uh, we provide an integrated crisis response, uh, and stabilization, as well as crisis prevention. Um, this is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five a year. Um, and our responders provide immediate evaluation, uh, and triage. They also will connect individuals who are facing a mental health crisis to mental health care resources, uh, within their community as well. Um, so anything from substance use, uh, to, uh, behavioral health, they'll connect them to the services as well. Um, our main goal is to promote symptom reduction, harm reduction, and safely transition people to acute crisis, or in acute crisis, to the appropriate stabilization level. Uh, the team is made up of qualified professionals. Um, our team lead is, um, has to be a licensed clinical staff member. Um, we also have a member that is certified with substance abuse, uh, and then a QP or an AP with experience with developmental disabilities. Um, and the Mobile Crisis Supervisor, which is Tanya, is available, uh, all, at all times for any kind of calls or consultations that might be needed. We also have a licensed psychiatrist available on call to mobile crisis staff at all times as well. Okay, uh, and then, uh, these are available to all ages, so children, adolescents, and adults. Um, so anyone who is experiencing an acute, immediate crisis, um, and has insufficient or severely limited resources or skills to cope with that crisis, um, or they have impairment of judgment, impulse control, cognitive, conceptual disabilities, or they're intoxicated or in withdrawal and in need of substance use treatment. Um, to access our services, uh, in Robinson, Bladen, or Scotland Counties, uh, we've got our crisis line, which is eight hundred five six eight nine six eight nine, um, or individuals can call Trillium Health Resources Crisis Line, and they can connect them. For immediate response. Um, so it is immediate response. Uh, they have two hours per North Carolina standards to meet with individuals once they've been dispatched. Um, however, our team does attempt to respond as quickly as possible to everyone who calls. Um, and again, mobile crisis, so we will go anywhere that the individual has a need. So if that is their home, if that is a physician's office, if that's Walmart, we'll meet them wherever they are, uh, to be able to provide that crisis service. Uh, limitations, um, so if someone is in a hospital setting, jail, or prison, uh, that does, is a limitation for Mobile Crisis Services. We can't provide services in those settings. Um, and we also cannot provide medical treatment, administer medications, or write prescriptions. Um, the other thing is, Mobile Crisis is a voluntary service, so, uh, an individual must be able to give verbal consent or sign consent in order for us to be able to see them, their child, um, or, or whoever's in need. Um, and then if there are safety concerns, at times, Mobile Crisis Staff will request accompaniment by law enforcement on those calls, just to ensure safety of everyone involved. Um, our goals, um, we want to do early crisis intervention. So again, we want to meet individuals where they are. Um, we want to be able to provide those services, uh, that will help to reduce the crisis at, at that moment. Um, we also want to reduce, uh, utilization of emergency services. Um, if we're able to help someone in crisis, uh, and they don't need to go to the emergency department, we don't need to involve law enforcement or, uh, EMS, then we've successfully, um, been able to reduce that, um, that, that need. Um, and then we want to bring the crisis response to individuals that don't have transportation, uh, aren't able to get to an emergency department, aren't able to get somewhere else that can serve that need, and we want to be able to support, uh, the individual or their family, uh, in those times of crisis, as well as, uh, supporting the community through this service. Um, and then we will link them to community resources as well. Okay, any questions from our county commissioners?
You, correct me if I'm wrong, you're, you're tied with Trillium somehow in this, right?
Yes, so Trillium is, um, the, uh, MCO in the area, and they will, um, provide, uh, services as well to help link individuals to our mobile crisis.
Okay, okay.
So would you accompany law enforcement? Like, let's take a scenario like an IBC where a person's asking to have a, have an individual committed. Would you accompany, uh, sheriff's deputy in a scenario like that?
Yeah, um, the law enforcement's have called us when they were out there on the scene, and they need us to come and do an assessment, and if we do an assessment, we can determine if they need to do an involuntary commitment.
Okay, so you can actually do an IBC screening and make a determination for involuntary commitment?
Yeah, we go out there and do the assessment, determine that there is a safety concern, they're in danger of themselves or somebody else, and then we, uh, petition that in front of our manager.
Okay, and I've read that, I guess you said there's a two-hour response window?
It's the state mandated time. We have to respond within two hours, but we respond as quickly as possible before two hours.
So do you have a provider who lives in Scotland County?
Um, at this moment, not, not yet, no. She actually moved to our other county.
So what would the nearest person be coming from?
Um, Lumberton.
Mm-hmm.
Robinson Counties.
So how does this fit with the, tw- isn't there like a twenty-four hour, like, emergent care for mental issues in Lumberton or something? I know I'm not using the right language, but.
Yeah, we have a crisis. Well, we have a crisis center in, um, with Monarch in Lumberton, and then is there a behavioral?
We have a behavioral health service here in Scotland County, so if it's an emergent need and we see them and they need to see a psychiatrist, within that same day, they can go to Open Access here in Scotland County. There's a Monarch Office for outpatient services.
Correct. So after hours, would they end up going to Lumberton or something like that to get?
Well, when, if we determine there's a need, that's like a safety concern, then it'd be the hospital, but if it's just something we can stabilize the crisis while we're there, give them coping skills, do a safety, um, treatment plan with them, then we will be able to link them to services the next day. They're able to go to Monarch as Open Access in Scotland or Robinson County.
So y'all do refer them to our holding area at Scotland Memorial.
Yes.
They added on.
Yes.
Portion for that twenty-four hour.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood. You can help me. On your question about the IVCs going with law enforcement, that was after an IVC. You're asking after one had already been ordered.
Yeah, so if someone calls in and says, you know, this person is behaving in a, in a bizarre way, or in a way that's inconsistent with their normal behavior, um, a lot of times they'd be evaluated and a determination would be made, and I guess my question is, are they the right people to do that? Because if you keep them out of the ER, which I saw is one of your objectives, it seems like that would be pretty useful.
Right, so when we have the Facility Based Crisis Center, it's a twenty-four hours facility, so we would call them and ask them to do a triage. They would find, um, consult with the physicianal staff to see if that person is in mental health, can actually go to the twenty-four hours facility. It's not twenty-four hours facility, it's a, um, five to seven day detox and mental health crisis center.
Okay.
Have you done the same presentation with our sheriff's?
Um, I don't think so, not lately. We have not. But the sheriff's department has called us. Scotland County Schools utilize us all the time.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Cause you know, we were getting a lot of pushback around the amount of resources that IVCs take. So we were very interested in mobile crisis, because if we can keep from just taking them to the ER and then s- a deputy sitting with them for an extended period of time, waiting for a hospital bed and an evaluation, uh, it seems like this would be a, a good option, but a lot of people didn't seem to know much about it.
Yeah, I think what he's explaining is, um, the petition to sit in front of that, the physician actually do the IVCs.
Honestly, the, the, the whole way of doing it, and I brought this up before, behind McDonald's used to be our mental health center. In law enforcement's perspective, we would take them there. They would see a psychiatrist on the scene. He would evaluate them and send them to Lumberton. At that point, we would transport them to Lumberton, the third floor. Some cases, they would stay two weeks, three weeks. Some cases, they would transform them to daughter dicks, according to how severe their mental state was. When they dissolved our mental health system in North Carolina, it crippled us, crippled law enforcement. It put the burden on the counties and the taxpayers. I get it where the sheriff's coming from. It takes a lot of resource, especially the overtime. You have to call someone in to transport, and they may go six hours away, three hours away. So if you can come up with a solution, everybody in the state will come.
That's why I'm asking these questions, because I do think y'all are part of the solution. The question is, you know, are we utilizing you in the right way? You know, cause I know at Scotland Healthcare System, a lot of times they're doing telehealth psychiatry, so the person's being evaluated on a screen over something similar to Zoom, and, uh, it seems like there needs to be a, a more hands-on approach where you know these people, cause I hear a lot of times they're recurring.
Right.
Um, and as your therapists get to know them, they kind of understand better how to best help them, um, because driving them up down the road is not therapy, so.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you both for coming. We appreciate it. All right, moving on, our next item is the IE Johnson Multi-Family Housing Project. I see Dr. Whittaker's here, and Tiffany Anthony is here, and in the backbone of the organization, Ms. Foskey is here.
That's it. You guys might as well come on up here. Hi, good after, or good evening, everybody. I hope you all are doing well. Um, it's been a minute since I've been here, since our team, well, me personally, they've been here, but I see a lot of new faces, so, um, I've been working collaboratively with April Sneed on, um, the IEJ Affordable Housing Project. So I think you all are aware of what this project is, um, and I've been told that you would like an update on the project. So, um, just to, just to give you a quick little summary, um, about this project, I believe we entered into a partnership, I think it was twenty twenty-three, April, is that right? So we are still at it, trust me. We have worked diligently, uh, with Ms. Sneed. We've been on many calls with our consultant, with our funders, um, and I think there may have been a concern that the funding is not available for this project anymore, but I would want to assure you that it is. So there was a period of time that the funding was halted, if you recall, when there was the natural disaster in Asheville, and, um, uh, the Housing Finance Agency decided, hey, that's a, a greater priority, so not just us, but other projects like ours was halted. So with this project, there are two grants, uh, that will fund this project, okay? And the first phase of this project is funded by the Sharp Grant. That's the Supportive Housing American Rescue Plan, Sharp. Um, and with that first phase, there will be ten units that will be constructed. Those will be one and two-bedroom units, and the award amount for that particular project, if, if you need a refresher, is a little over three point two million dollars, okay? Then the second grant, which is the second phase, is awarded by INCOR, which is the North Carolina Office of Recovery and Resiliency, and that award amount for that grant is a little over nine point six million dollars, okay? And that phase will construct forty-five units, and that will be one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, all right? So with this project, SCAP is current SCAP, Southeastern Community Action Partnership. Um, we are leveraging partnerships, other partnerships with stakeholders, like Department of Social Services, um, and other entities to ensure that we are providing affordable housing fairly and equitably to low-income citizens, okay? Um, I'll have Ms. Anthony discuss that a little bit more, but we got to make sure that we are targeting areas all over Scotland County to make sure it's fair and equitable, okay? Um, and, uh, for those of you that are not aware. Um and uh for those of you that are not aware, Southeastern Community Action Partnership, um we have a um um housing um um department, um program, a voucher program already where we provide over four hundred vouchers to residents of Scotland County, alright? So I know I'm off script with these slides and that that just happens, but um um so we have already completed, one of the the largest components of this project has been the environmental study. So if you you're familiar, I'm sure, with development projects, so that environmental study to make sure that that land um near that school is safe, it's solid, that there are no issues related to building on that land. So the environmental study finally passed, so we kind of had to go through that process a second time um as Ms. Sneed is aware, because we started this project in twenty twenty-three, so they had to go back and you know, kind of do the study again, if you will, to make sure there has been nothing since then that uh violated or uh did any harm to that land, like we you can't even, we couldn't even put anything like a tent in the ground uh during that time, because we've been trying to do certain things out in that community to make sure um you know, we have a presence there. Um so, which we do, we have a Head Start School there, that's another story, but we do have a Head Start School that we operated for a very long time there. Um and you know, if you if you have a pulse right about now, you kind of know what uh the threats are to Head Start right now, what's happening um with the federal government, so we won't go there. Um so we've received a conditional commitment letter um from Sharp, um the Sharp Grant. And um there are certain things that Sharp is still waiting for, they have already given us the the green light on many things. Um and so now we are in the process, they are requiring a marketing study. Um the other thing that we've done, we started interviewing for a project manager, because you need to have a project manager to facilitate this project and then we will begin to do an RFP for a architect, once we get that project manager on board. Um and again, that's our process, that's what we have to do to be fair and equitable, we have to do a uh request for proposals, just like I'm sure the county does as well. So um we have, we actually just recently went to the North Carolina Housing Finance Conference, I think some of you were probably there. We did see other commissioners there, we served seven counties, for those of you that don't know. We served Laiden, Brunswick, Columbus, Hope, Pender, Scotland, and Robson, I hope I said seven. Um so that's kind of ingrained in me now, but um so we saw many of c- c- uh commissioners um and managers um at that conference and we were able to meet the team leads of the North Carolina, that th- those that have been working with us on this project. So that was really, really good that we were able to do that, and this team here, they are in the weeds, they are the ones uh like, you know, uh 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 he already said, this is my, this is my, uh she was my executive administrator for a while and now she's the director of contracts, this is my boss, okay? So and she does a wonderful job keeping us all together and um things all uniform, um so they were able to attend as well. So you might want to, your your biggest thing you want to know, okay, well, where are you breaking ground, when is this thing, when are we gonna start this? So we are hoping, I'm not even gonna give a date, cause that puts me on the spot, but soon. We're getting closer, so when that environmental study is complete, which it is, and we've gotten a commitment letter from one of the other grants, one of the grants, and we will hope to get one from the other one very soon. Um and you know, things are a little bit shaky right now, um with with the economy right about now, but we hope to get it soon. So I promise you, when we are ready to uh break ground, April Sneed will know. Uh and um we would expect all of you to be there, I'm sure you will, and everybody in this room to be there. Um and so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Um if there's something in particular that I have not addressed, April Sneed and I have already talked about having a meeting coming uh probably within the next, probably before Thanksgiving. Uh we'll we'll meet to kind of work out some details about um once the project begins, you know, what will that look like, because it is a partnership between the county and us. Um and how our teams will work succinctly together to make sure we bring this project to fruition. Um I yield to you, um Mr. I V.
Um does anybody have any questions directly on this project, cause I got another question, you were alluding to it, but I'm gonna go deeper into it.
Okay.
If, go ahead.
Condition, what was the name of the letter, you said conditional?
Uh I think I said a commitment letter, so it just means that once you finish everything they've asked you to do, they send you a commitment letter and say, you've done everything we've asked you to do.
So you said you got one of those on the Sharp?
Right, was it the Sharp or INCOR?
You didn't say.
Sharp, we got from both, okay, so 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 yes, but we got a uh uh for the INCOR, INCOR Grant, which is the second phase, they've kind of gone a little bit further further, because they've pretty much gotten everything that they need. The Sharp Grant, we still have one piece that they're waiting for, which is the marketing plan, but we can't move forward until we get what we need from particular partners, if you will. So it's a it's a it's a long process, but it is, the hard part is done, okay? So as long as individuals are in the office and available to receive our communication, then we're able to move forward, um but you know, right now, we probably have some small delays.
So what do you think you'll need from us before attending the groundbreaking? You mentioned that, but I mean, is there anything for us in between that we need to do to support?
Thank you for asking that, thank you for asking that. I can tell you, um working with Ms. Sneed, um she's getting to us what we need, um we oh, the one, yes, the one thing that we do need. We actually need some movement on, and we've talked about this, and I know she's working on this, the deed and looking at how we are going to because you still have the building there, right, the building is still there. So there are, with the building project, there are some issues related to what you need for parking, where there will be a division of the land, right? So I know that that's something we will definitely need, thank you for bringing that up. Um as it relates to that, and 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 April Sneed and I have had a conversation about that already.
Yeah, there there's several things that that still have to happen before any grant, like we need a survey on the property and you all are gonna have to decide on how you want the survey, the property surveyed out. Um the property was never surplus um that we can find, so the property hasn't been surplus where you could deed it to anybody else. Uh the property has to be rezoned, and so those are all things that that we're gonna meet about and talk about before we can even talk about funding.
Yeah, I I guess the only question I would have, y'all still looking at that north wing? Or is that completely out of the picture?
Well, I I've been asked that question several times and initially, we had an interest in it, um and but that, so we've kind of gone back and forth with the county about that, because we were interested in it, then I think the county was gonna renovate it, and then I think the county decided not to renovate it. So you know, that's a discussion I'd like to have offline, I don't I don't wanna be pinned to that here, if if you understand, so I think again, when we meet, we need to bring that back to the table to see where the county is with that project and or with the building, because I don't have, I'm not privy to that information with where you all are, what you're thinking about um that space. So I would need more clarity and just talk more about that, and of course, uh that's a discussion that I would have with my board, my board chair, executive committee, and my board, so before I answer that question. Yeah.
My off-the-topic question, that topic anyway,
Sure.
was I got your email, and everybody may have gotten that, about the CDBG programs that were gonna be interrupted or could be interrupted because of the
CSBG.
CSB, yeah, I'm sorry.
Community Services Block Grant, yeah.
The acronyms don't get along.
That's okay.
Um in a real short version of what that could affect in Scotland County, um, cause I know you cover a lot of stuff, so.
Yeah, we cover a lot of stuff, so we have uh Head Start, early Head Start, we have a food and nutrition program, we have our housing program. Um and we have the Community Services Block Grant, there would be no community action. There are over, there are about a thousand community action agencies like ours around the nation, okay? So there would be no community action without CSBG, the Community Services Block Grant. So unfortunately, the funding um has been halted, we've had to uh furlough um seven staff members um with that program. Um we received a letter from the state uh because of the government um shutdown.
Are you saying it's been halted in Scotland County or?
Every county, all seven counties. Everywhere, every, the whole state. The whole state, the Community Services Block Grant has, we received a stop work order um on uh I guess it was two Fridays ago, and so that was on a Friday evening. And so um that weekend, we had to furlough our staff. So what that means is the, that program that provides um an avenue for um citizens of Scotland County and across North Carolina to uh it's a self-sufficiency program, um to become self-sufficient, meaning assisting with employment. Um getting them on a track to even, you know, uh housing, um education. Uh we have several articulation agreements with community colleges, we are actually housed on the campuses of some community action, I'm sorry, community um colleges, um it has stopped. So even when even when the federal government opens back up, there is going to be a process, because uh the federal office uh in DC that works collaboratively with the state, the Office of Economic Opportunity, that program has been, that uh agency has been lifted. OCS.
Okay.
So you know, it's kind of, you know, we're constantly on calls, uh um you know, we're still here, we're still uh employed. Uh our Head Start Program, um one of them, our larger one, is still operating and then we have a smaller one that has three uh centers, that one has a November one renewal, we had to shut that program down.
I I just wanted you to kind of, I I knew you knew it, I just wanted everybody to hear it.
Well, I was I was concerned about the Head Start Program, cause I I remember it on Corona, they just did some additions. They put some money into that building and so it had to be shut down in Scotland County, that kind of hurts us a little bit.
Yeah, so Scotland County is is on the cycle, the grant cycle of our larger grant and that um center, there have just been some issues related to getting it um um up to code. So um we've been working with the city um and I think the last thing I heard, there was someone that was supposed to come out and and inspect it again. So we're ready, the slots are still there, so we are ready, but we can't, we don't even wanna announce it until that building, you see, we paved the parking lot, we removed that other one, right? So um that's where we are, so once it's up to code, then we'll begin the recruitment process again, because we wanna make sure since we have a presence there with housing, that we have a facility for children to
There's a need for that head.
Absolutely, at one hundred percent.
Hey, um I noticed in the background reading, there's a letter that gives you guys a six-year option from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-nine for a certain parcel or parcels? Does that include the annex building behind IEJ?
That does not include the annex building.
I think those are two different.
Annex building is something totally separate from this housing project, so.
I understood at one time, there was discussion around the annex building
Yeah.
somehow being used, I just wanted you to
So, yeah, let me clarify that, so that was the county, uh when your previous county manager was here, we had a discussion about that annex and whether or not we had a need for that building. So our thought process, because we knew we were starting this project, that we could possibly use it for offices or you know, just so we would have s- a staff presence there and just thinking forward, thinking about what that could mean for the entire community to, you know, because I think one time the county was exploring having other social services there. Um so we thought, hey, yeah, we should be there too, so that's wholly separate from this project. Um
So if I look at this rendering up here, does that mean then you don't want any of that land that's outlined in purple? So you don't have use for that?
So what that means is that we could explore use of that land again, but what does that mean as it relates to a responsibility for us? Because we are a nonprofit, we are federally funded, and what we know is that that's gonna take some work. If we take on that building, the condition of that building, what we all know, that's a hi- that's a high-dollar item, so.
Like it's a um a tear-down grant, you know, to remove the structure and then you have an open area back there for additional parking or, you know, whatever you might need.
Tear down.
Because I don't think it's, yeah, there's demolition grants to take down old structures and stuff.
He's talking about, he's talking about if they were to take that, yeah.
I'm just saying, that's another option that might make that useful.
It's not that bad for for what they wanna use it for.
Right.
Tear down. That's not a tear-down project.
No, I meant, but if it's not suitable for offices and not suitable for rehab.
For they what they need it for. Right, somebody else could use, let me tear it down.
Yeah, the what, and what we're talking about tonight is that section in the green, in 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 for the housing is from there pretty much all the way back to almost as
Yeah.
They were two different, two different resolutions we did.
Yeah, those are those are two different resolutions, and I think that again, at like I said, um we are open to explore it again, but I think that that is something that the commissioners just kind of needed to discuss and and uh decide how you would like to proceed and 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 what you would be interested in um offering to our agency and then we could move forward, once you come to an agreement.
Okay. Somebody else got anything? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, thank you, so good to see you all, thank you for your partnership.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, uh our next item will be the uh uh zoning quasi-judicial hearing for Yates, um Jonathan Yates. And so we would ask if anybody coming up for that, with this being a quasi-judicial hearing, we would need to swear in anyone that's gonna wants to talk in this. So if you want to come up, we can get Ms. Tyson here to do everybody at once and and uh you like that, wouldn't you, Ms. Tyson?
Sure.
Swear everybody in on this, this quasi-judicial hearing, please. And then once she does that, we'll document your names and stuff in the minutes and and uh or do you, you wanna do it? Right. You just just tell her that. Alright.
Do you solemnly swear that the information that you're about to present to the board is true and accurate?
Thank you all, alright. Brooke, we'll start with you.
Okay. So we have um condition use application number five thirty-eight twenty-five, it's Tower Con with Mr. Jonathan L. Yates requests to place a three-hundred-foot guided style wireless communication facility with a nine-foot lightning rod for With a nine-foot lightning rod for a total height of three-hundred-and-nine feet. The property is located off of Stewartsville Cemetery Road in Laurinburg, North Carolina, also described as Tax Map Number Twenty-nine Oh-one.
Okay. And the address of this is, well, it's off of Stewartsville. But it's, it's Carmichael's property, right? Picture, oh, there it is. You got it up. Okay. I was looking through. And the Planning and Zoning Board has.
Made the recommendation.
For that, so. All right, anybody want to speak for that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Frank Longest. I'm a North Carolina Licensed Attorney. I practice law in Burlington, North Carolina with the law firm of Holt, Longest, Wall, and Mosley. We serve as North Carolina counsel to the applicant. My duty here tonight is to back up anything if we have to get to the quasi judicial hearing. To present the evidence for you to make your findings a fact. What I'd like to do is to make it somewhat informal if we may. And just proceed with a presentation and then present the record to you. And then be able to answer any questions that you have instead of going through a formal process like we sometimes do. We might be here for a while. It's my privilege tonight really to introduce you to Jonathan Yates. He's a South Carolina attorney. He practices in Charleston, South Carolina. And those of us who do some practice in the cellphone communications field know Jonathan well. We kind of consider Jonathan the guru of cell tower applications. He's probably done more cell tower applications than anyone I know. He's done literally hundreds of them in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. So it's my privilege to introduce you to Jonathan Yates, who's going to make the presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jonathan Yates, it's good to be with you tonight. First and foremost, I have to tell you, this is my first time working in Scotland County. It has been an absolute pleasure. From all my work with Brooke McQueen, and you know, I asked her fifty to a hundred stupid questions. She never laughed at, laughed at me. To the help of Ms. Tyson and County Attorney Johnston, everyone has treated me with the utmost professionalism, and I'm glad to be here. Tonight, we're proposing a facility for T-Mobile, and this is, as Brooke described it. It's a three-hundred-foot, what we call the guide style facility. That's with the wires coming down. Safe for T-Mobile. It's also designed so there's space both on the facility and on the ground. For any additional broadband carrier that might want to cover that area as well. I got to thank someone else, and I got to thank the Carmichael family, represented tonight by Bill Carmichael. This piece of property is owned by his daddy, William Carmichael. They've had it since about nineteen ninety-three. It's forty-five acres. The piece we're on, they have another seventy-nine acres to the south. And since that time, they've farmed about thirty acres of it. Traditionally, corn, soybeans, a little bit of winter wheat. Bill's telling me he's getting out of the winter wheat business, so he's just finishing up with the corn and soybeans. Why I have to thank him is the part, the location of this property. Is exactly where T-Mobile wanted to be to make their necessary connections. Also, due to the size of this property, we were able to achieve some very important setbacks to all the property lines. And it lays out just perfectly for us. We talk about what this facility will do. What it'll do is folks can yak on their phone. Everyone's doing that. They can go to Google. God knows what they want to Google. But to me, most importantly, if I'm driving down Stewartsville Cemetery Road, what this system will do is also give folks. Very effective access to nine-one-one first responders, whether it be fire, police, EMS. Importantly, in Scotland County, you have Scotland Alerts. We need for the phone system to be there for the Scotland Alerts to work. Also with us tonight is my colleague, Robin Clement of Towercom, actually my boss. If we're allowed to do this, it takes Robin about sixty to ninety days to get the facility up. After that point, T-Mobile comes in, places their equipment, tinkers with it, makes sure it's working with the rest of the network. After that point, T-Mobile will only have to visit maybe barely eight to ten times a year, not even once a month. The equipment is all operated remotely, monitored remotely. So what I'm saying is they will not create any additional traffic on Stewartsville Cemetery Road. They will not create any noise, odor, dust, vibration, fumes, or glare. What will the facility do? It'll let people use their phones. It'll give you the access to the nine-one-one, and it will allow Scotland Alerts to work. To get here tonight, we had to do some other reviews. We were reviewed and approved by the FAA. They issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation. And in this case, we're about four-point-three-seven nautical miles from the Laurinburg-Maxton Airport. So at every stage of the requirement, we were able to meet it, and a lot of that goes to the Carmichael family. Sometimes it's hard to shoehorn this kind of facility on a piece of property. They offered a piece of property right where the carrier needed to be, and it had the sufficient size, and they were gracious with our placement. So we were able to make everything work. Frank sometimes jokes when he introduces me, it takes six minutes to say my name. I'm from the south. I apologize. I'm a long-winded, but I'm here for any and all questions the chair, the board, or staff might have. And we, we thank you all for your time.
Two questions came to my mind. The first one was, the first one was about the airport because. And I'm not a pilot, but we have one member that is, and I, I, I'm assuming that this is clear for the. Yeah, he said the FAA cleared it, so I, I just didn't know.
Well, you actually have higher towers than that.
Right.
Closer to the.
Right, okay.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I, I did some boards. You're giving me an excuse to use.
All right.
This is a copy. This was the finding by the.
FAA, okay.
This was the finding by the FAA of a determination of no hazard to air navigation.
Okay.
A smaller copy of that would be in with the materials to submit.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, Mr. County Attorney. Yes, sir. And again, because of the distance where it's, I think it's four-point-three-seven. How I remember point-three-seven, I don't know.
I just knew it had to be somewhere close to the approach of that airport.
Yeah.
Somewhere in there.
But we're over four miles from nautical miles.
And where, where on that plot is it going to be? Do you know?
I get to use my second board.
Oh, see, I'm foreseeing all this.
I'm going to approach a little bit to bring this up if I may, and I will swivel. That's Stewartsville Cemetery here. We've got the access. This is the one piece, and the other piece, this is the forty-five acre piece, and the seventy-nine acre piece.
Would that land require a buffer? Would land require a buffer around it? That's homes on that, on that.
What we have is a three-hundred-foot guy. And we have designed by the Mark Minder Professional Engineer. And what he designs is what is called fall zone in catastrophic situation.
Yeah. Was that what you meant by the buffer? You meant by visual, not being able to see it? He's talking about the fall zone. Yeah, well, I'm talking about foreseeing, you know. As far as seeing. See, I'm talking about when you get down low.
Is there a buffer around the bottom of it or any at all? I guess is what he's.
Property line buffer.
Visual buffer.
Not really. It's, you know, a tower is a tower, and, you know, we're in the middle of, you know, some crop fields. And then, but the perimeter of the property does have some tree buffer as well as going down to the other property owned by the Carmichals.
Yeah, all that around is owned by the Carmichaels, right? That's what I thought.
So I have a question for Brooke. So if we approve this action tonight. Do we also approve any future ground equipment or towers that might be installed inside of that same parcel?
It can be part of your, with the special use, it can be part of one of your conditions.
Okay, so when we approve this, we're approving it for all forty-five acres, right? Whether it's ground equipment or smaller aerials.
Yeah, and we, and we're only planning the one tower.
Sure.
And the way it's designed, T-Mobile going first, we're hoping, because there's, there's a better need for coverage by the other folks out there. We have space both on the tower and then on the ground. So if they want to do it too, and that's what we call co-location. But we've designed the compound such. And one thing about buffering, under your ordinance, we're having a compound fence, but it's a wooden fence. So that, that helps buffer it, that helps buffer it. But we designed that as a sixty-by-sixty compound. It'll have the space for T-Mobile's equipment. And if the others want to come and serve that area, we can't force them to. We hope they'll come. We have space on the ground. And the tower is designed structurally by Mr. Kirk Hall to handle their equipment also, handle their equipment.
Like it's pretty, pretty far off the road too, so. Looks to be.
Your written submissions want to address things like land valuation effects if presumably there won't be any. For adjoining properties and also compatibility issues of that nature.
Yeah, we've, we've seen Attorney Johnson. It's actually the other effects where we're hearing from folks a lot younger than me. When they're going to look at a house, some real stations tell them, they show them the house, the folks walk through. And they check every room out to see if the phone works. So in terms of land valuation. We're seeing the other side of that effect where if you don't have. You don't have the coverage, it can affect it. As to compatibility, that's a bit what I was touching on. Ms. Robin, we'll get it up. She'll get it up in that timeframe. You will not see cars coming out daily. It's only a couple of times a year. And again, does it create any noise? The things that, you know, you think about compatibility, noise, odor, dust, vibration, fumes, glare. None of that, none of that. What it does, you know, they're starting to call us. The fourth utility. Because for a lot of folks, particularly when we had the. Bad economic downturn in the country at the end of, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand eleven. A lot of folks had to make tough decisions to put food on the table, what they could cut out. And we saw what a lot of folks cut out was that landline phone. You know, it was seventy, eighty dollars a month, and if you could save it, they, you know, they went to wireless. And they depend on the wireless, so in terms of compatibility and need, wireless has become important. To not only the folks in Scotland County, but throughout the state of North Carolina.
How common is it that you have multiple antennas on one side?
Very common. That, that is, it's very common.
So is this, for this size site, how many potential towers could go there safely?
Just one tower. What, yeah, the design is just for one tower, but the tower is designed not only for T-Mobile. But the other carriers that hold licenses to operate in Scotland County, there's space on the tower and the ground. Only one tower though.
There should never be another three-hundred-foot tower in another location on that parcel.
No, so they would have to come back to you. What we're proposing tonight is the one three-hundred-foot tower with the sixty-foot on sixty-foot compound. Yeah.
Interested in whether or not it could become a three-tower.
No, they would, they would have to. They would have to go back to Ms. Brooke, apply for another special use permit. Go, go to planning zoning and then come back before this body to say yea or nay. But again, with the way we've designed it.
It's not, if I'm understanding, it's not going to be a need for another tower.
No. No, sir.
Other carriers can get on that.
Well, it's just like our tower out here.
Multiple towers, so it's not an impossible scenario.
Right.
Yeah, it's not an impossible scenario, but where you would see that more importantly, in the old days when you had people put up broadcast towers. Whether it be FM, AM, then say a trucking company would put up on the same because it was a good piece of property, would put up their eight-hundred-megahertz system. What has happened with the wireless industry, they share the towers. Someone, you have an anchor who will be the driving need for it. If the others can use it and they have the budget to cover that area, they go ahead and share, and they're used to sharing. It's also.
It's kind of like our tower out here that we just put up a couple of years ago. It's, you know, Verizon's on it, we're on it. I think WLNC is on it. There's several different that occupy that one tower. Verizon actually paid for it to be built or leased it. And, and that's how we build it, but it's, it's more than one company up there.
And what they like about that, you, the capital expenditure is shared. Versus having to go out and build a whole nother tower, having to go to the FAA, all that regulatory. And as much as we like Ms. Brooke, it's easier if the tower's there, just put it in for co-location.
People would have a different feelings for one tower, knowing they'll never see another one. They'll probably go, it's okay. But if suddenly they were to see multiple, people could feel kind of differently, so.
I, I agree, and that's the old term we used to use for what, in the old days, we called the tower farm. Where different users, whether it be FAAM, sometimes county EMS would want to have their own, and they, they join forces. The only way you could get a second tower on this property would be this board.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else at this time would like to give any evidence in this hearing? All right, seeing none, I will close the hearing. Oh, yes, sir.
Apologize.
That's all right.
As part of the record, there's an extensive application process. And each paragraph, your ordinance has been answered in this application. And I'd like to submit this as part of the record for the hearing, so that you have the foundation and basis for your findings of fact.
Okay, give that to Ms. Tyson right here on the end. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I say we move on with this. I'll make the motion to move on with this.
As a special use permit for this, for this. All right, so we have a motion for the special use permit. We have a second? Have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you all. Mr. Johnson needs to see you back there real quick before, before you leave. All right, let me get to the next one here.
CACC.
Oh, boy, come on. So this would be, the next one be a public hearing on the Norton and James. Uh, property. Application. There you are. I'm sorry. Look, I'm looking around for you. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
So I have a rezoning application number five thirty-seven twenty-five for Cruz and Mart. Mr. Teddy Norton is requesting to rezone approximately an acre and a half of property. From residential agriculture to neighborhood commercial. He is replacing an existing convenience store. The property is located at the fork of Andrew Jackson Highway and Corbett Road. And the Planning and Zoning Board made the recommendation to approve this rezoning. From RA to C-one.
All right, so at this time, we'll open the public hearing on this matter as well. For anyone who wishes to speak for or against it, but I have a question. I'm assuming this is the store in Old Hundred, right?
Yes. I'm sorry.
This is the store in Old Hundred. What is he needing to rezone for? Is it the back or?
Well, he has the store here, there's two homes. Like above it, and he is going to relocate those homes and expand. That, that right now is residential agriculture, and in order for him to expand the size of his store, he has to have that for neighborhood commercial.
Okay, that was, that was going to be my question.
So, so this, are you going to the back and to the side?
Yes.
Are you, okay.
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure why, why, why he needed it. But if, if that part of the land is still RA, I guess.
Yeah, it is still RA, and he needs it to put the store expansion on it.
All right, good enough. All right, anyone speak for the hearing for or against this project? All right, seeing none, we'll close. We'll, let me close the public hearing first, and then we will seek for a motion to approve. Motion to approve the permit. Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
It's where you can have. It's where you can have, um, you can operate a business out of your home in a rural area.
Does it prohibit things like truck parking or just?
There is an off-street parking, um, ordinance. Um, I have another rezoning application, five forty-one twenty-five, Mr. Anthony and Ms. Amy James. They're requesting to rezone approximately point four acres from neighborhood commercial, C one, to residential agriculture, RA, to place a mobile home.
I don't think we have anything on that.
I don't see anything on it.
Well, there's another one in your folder, but that's not the name on it.
Anthony and Amy James.
Yeah, this is Seth somebody else on.
Yeah, I don't see one in the packet.
They're all in one packet.
Yeah, that was, the only other one I see in there is the Seth Creek Res zoning major subdivision. We've already done that, right?
Yeah, that was last.
That one. That's the only one I see and then the one we just did.
Could it have been in the?
It's only has, it only has those two in there, Jonathan Yates and, um.
Yates, Norton and James?
And Norton, no Norton and, yeah, the, the Mr. Norton's. That's the only two that's in there. Where that is. Condition use permits, because there's, there's condition use tower, that's the tower.
Yeah, I think there was only two in there.
Well, but then there's a.
You say in James?
There was a, there was a notification in the public hearing about the CSG capital, but you, that's one we already did, right?
That's last month.
Last month. And then there is the tower. And that's it, that's where it ends.
Forty-six pages.
Yeah, I have it. Amy James.
It's forty-six pages total.
Yeah.
Uh.
I haven't found it yet.
I ain't found it.
It's forty-six pages in this one.
Is it in the shared drive or is it in the packet?
Where are you looking at, shared drive? It's not looking.
It's page thirty.
Page thirty.
Of the zoning one?
Yes.
See, I don't think it, this one will open it. Okay, there's forty-six pages or something.
It's forty-six pages, he said it's page thirty.
The problem with it, on the other drive, it stops at page twenty-five. So that's why I didn't see this. All right, hold on a second, let's all get on the same page. Can you, April, look to see if you can find that? It's on, it's not in that shared, but it's in that, uh, where she sent the agenda to everybody.
It's in the email?
It's, it's attached and there is the zoning amendment.
It's on page thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to get down to it. See, the other one ended Dorothy on page twenty-five, so.
I don't think I can pull, I can try to pull, I'd have to search all through email to do that. If it wasn't in the drive.
Okay, there it is, well. Thirty, all right, replicate. Anthony and Amy James request a rezoner approximately neighborhood commercial or residential property, is it twenty-five, five sixty-one Harris Road, Marston? Am I on the right one now?
Yeah.
Also described to Scotland County may, okay.
There used to be a convenience store there years ago and, um, it has been torn down, it's going to be torn down so that they can put a mobile home there if they get the rezoning approved.
But it's, it's neighborhood commercial now.
Right, and they want to rezonate to residential agriculture.
Okay, so we'll need to open a public hearing on that one as well?
Yes.
Yes, so we need to open the public hearing. Not quite, yes, right. Um, for a rezoning request on Harris Road in Marston, North Carolina. Is anyone here want to speak for or against this project?
The applicant is here, but she's.
That's fine, she doesn't have.
Have any questions, but other than that.
She wants to, but.
There was no opposition to that at the zoning board meeting, was there?
No, sir, we made a recommendation to approve.
Okay.
Unanimous?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on this matter and move it to more discussion. Pretty self-explanatory there, once we found it anyway.
How big of a property is it?
It's like point four of an acre.
I'm just trying to place where Harris Road is in Marston.
So I thought, I thought five oh one, like you passed the fire department coming back this, towards this way. Deercroft, Harris Road's next road to the left there.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just don't remember a store being there. Yes, no, no, that's not, okay, never mind.
Don't remember a store being there, but I'm.
I don't either, I, that's. Oh, that was before my time. Bo may remember that, he was around.
Poor your time, boy.
Poor my time.
Thanks for not including me on that.
Yeah, well, Ed probably helped build it, so that was, anyway. No, I was talking about this here. Um, all right, any other discussion, questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve this, uh, zoning change on this particular parcel.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to the twenty-twenty-six holiday calendar. And I've got myself all messed up on this drive now, I hope you can pull it up, yeah. Nothing really different.
No, it's the same holidays as you've approved for the last two years.
But we need to do a formal approving of the twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule, so just any other discussion, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule. County holiday schedule. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have two seconds? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, next is the board of commissioners' calendar. Uh, the, the only thing I see you need to take off of that or would need to take off of that would be the twenty-fifth of February. Uh, that is the last day of the NACO conference, so some may be up there or not back from it yet. But we can, yeah, same hotel. I was going to talk about that later, but since it's on there. Um, and, and we can. I mean, unless you just want to schedule it the week before.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can either choose to move it or that's a budget meeting, you can.
And that's like one of our first budget meetings, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So we could change it to the.
We're considering having a, I, I say budget meeting, but more of a meeting in January, starting a little earlier since you've got tax revale this year. Uh, that's going to take some more discussion.
But all that can be done, well, that's what the one for the twenty-first is, right?
Yes, sir. If you also notice, uh, I had a suggestion to move all the meetings here, even your budget meetings. But, but that's up to y'all. Uh, I think more and more people are coming to budget meetings and that room's getting more and more crowded.
I think you're right.
That's good.
That's fun. I, I would just say maybe change the February one to the week before that. So that would make it the eighteenth. Is that right? And then we'll, and we can adjust these as we go.
But if you go ahead and make it, um, go ahead and make your change now, then we, you won't have to, you know, advertise it a different day.
Right, right. Okay.
So from the twenty, what is that?
Twenty-fifth until the, to eighteenth. Just make it the week before. And Ms. Tyson will send all these out to us so we can put them on our calendar, right? Because if it ain't on my calendar, it ain't happening. Uh, all right. Need a motion to approve the board of commissioners with that change.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, uh, tax revision, reevaluation, schedule of values, Mickey Butler and John Jorgensen. Are you both doing it or one doing it?
Good evening, my name is Mickey Butler, your finance officer, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the tax department. Um, according to general statute one oh five, two eighty-six, it is required that counties have a revaluation at least once every eight years. Scotland County Board of Commissioners decided to go ahead and move that up a year to twenty-twenty-six. We have contracted out with a consultant, Piner Appraisal, who, um, has helped us with that. Um, they have completed a full list of measure on commercial and industrial properties. And, um, our tax staff in the office has completed the revaluation or is working to complete the revaluation on the residential properties. So, um, one of the big pieces of this revaluation is a schedule of values. This schedule of values, we contracted out to Piner Appraisal as well, and they are here to present that to you tonight. I am going to introduce Gary Piner, owner of Gary, um, Piner Appraisals.
Thank you, Mickey. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, managers need, hope y'all are doing well. Um, as Mickey said, we've been working on the, the revaluation, a joint effort where we've done part of it. The county staff has done part of it. Um, thank you for having us this evening to present the schedule. Um, we at Piner Appraisal visited all the commercial and industrial properties on site, correcting a lot of data. Uh, the tax office has been, their staff has been doing the, um, desktop review, excuse me, on the residential. Um, the schedule of values that, uh, you've been provided with is the compilation of rates, rules and guidelines that we have used for conducting the twenty-twenty-six revaluation. You also have been provided with tentative dates and tasks associated with the schedule of values that follow this evening's presentation, uh, leading to your adoption of the schedule of values. With us this evening is Mr. Glenn Jones, who has been our project manager for your reevaluation. He's going to share some sales and relevant information with you regarding the local market.
Good evening.
Hello.
Well, uh, obviously the purpose of a reevaluation is for equal, is an equalization of property values. And, uh, right, current ratio for Scotland County, twenty-twenty-four ratio is, uh, sixty-eight point five one. And I've gone through my cells here, the ratio, that doesn't mean you take a hundred and minus point sixty-eight and what does that give you, uh, thirty-two or, you, you know what I'm saying, uh, percent increase? That's probably around county-wide a fifty percent increase. Uh, and again, that's statistics, so, uh, it, you know what I mean, averages and things of this nature. Uh, one thing I've run into, and I've been told to be honest up here. One thing I've run into is very bad data. Uh, in doing the analysis for Scotland County, Scotland County properties have not been looked at in a long time, residential properties. Uh, to give you a little history about myself, I worked in Craven County, uh, for thirty-two years, chief appraiser, and retired in Craven County. And so I'm very, very familiar with the tax office. When I first started, uh, in a tax office in nineteen ninety-one, my mother asked me, excuse me. She said, "Son, how do you like your job?" And I said, "Mom, people hate you." And that was the truth, believe it or not, because a lot of people don't understand taxes. And they don't understand a reevaluation. And when you have people from the outside come into an area, uh, the only thing we're doing is analyzing the current market. So we're looking at current data in your market. Uh, in Craven County, I was lucky enough to be, uh, y'all have BiTech Camma system, software, mass appraisal system. I was lucky enough to get with the owner of BiTech and help set Craven County's system up. Uh, and we kind of, you know, uh, definitely localized it to what our needs were. Uh, no one's ever done that in Scotland County, nothing bad. It's a, it's a system, it's a Camma system. But it's got so much more it could do. And just to give y'all an example, and I tell Gary, I struggle. Uh, I'm an appraiser. If you had me to go out and appraise your farm and you had fifty acres of cleared land and seventy-five acres of woodsland, then obviously I would appraise your farm accordingly with fifty acres of cleared land, because there's a different market value for cleared land. And seventy-five acres of woodsland, because there's a different value for woodsland. And I would cruise the timber, but taxes do not take into account timber value. Uh, Scotland County does not have a way to separate. It's just one tract, one acreage tract. So right from the get-go, you're throwing a dart, if you will. Because I've never, I've never done an appraisal on a farm and not had the cleared acreage and the wooded acreage broken out. Uh, it's one long land line, if you will, of formula. Uh, anything over an acre in Scotland County is valued under model four. Model four is an acreage model, so it deals with probably, it's probably got up to fifteen multipliers in it that discern whether road frontage. Uh, it's got a depth factor adjustment, but it, it says in, uh, in the schedule, which is in the system, if you will, because the schedule is mimicking the system, to not add a depth in there and things of this nature. So I'm, I am working within your system. That's exactly what I'm doing. And, uh, the data, and I know that I've worked, as I said, thirty-two years in a tax office. Nobody likes the tax representative come knock on their door and say, "I'm out here to review your property and to review the buildings on your site and things of that nature." Uh, there's a general statute that all people should report any changes made to their property. I've been, I retired in twenty-twenty-three. I believe that number was a hundred dollars of value. Uh, people don't do that and that's understandable. So tax offices go the next step and, and technology, tools have been a wonderful thing. So you have, uh, Eagle View, which is, they shoot at a forty-five degree angle. I know y'all have probably seen the pictures from Eagle View, very, very good, uh, aerial photos, a lot of tools that go with it. You can measure and do things like that. But I noticed in your data, in that, uh, program, there are fifteen hundred sketch problems right now in there. And if you take that fifteen hundred, and again, I was a manager in our office, you have to have the personnel to work that. And that's, that's a lot of properties. And, you know, so if you don't have the personnel to work it, and plus, that's on top of your normal routine, which is working building permits and obviously new construction and the people that do list going checking their properties. So that being said, I'm just saying this is not a perfect game. Uh, what we're doing is we're, we're, uh, well, we're actually doing the best we can. Uh, Scotland County, I, I don't know how many neighborhoods they had in the beginning, but I know we probably doubled or tripled those neighborhoods. The purpose of a neighborhood is to get comparable properties within one area that you can get the, the data out and apply it to all the properties within that area. And, and therefore you're presumed to be equitable. And so, uh, the staff at Scotland County has done a good job with that. I'm working within that program and, uh, and we have the statistics. So we're all statistically based. Again, you have a state sales ratio, uh, that measures the level of assessment. I never quote percentages, because percentages are all over the board. If you tell somebody the county values are going up fifty percent, if they go up fifty-two percent, then someone's going to call the tax office and said, "I heard it was only going up fifty percent." So your ranges are all over the board. And to give you, uh, just a, an example, uh, and these are current sales. And to give you uh, just a, an example, uh, and these are current sales, but uh, in, as I said, I retired in twenty twenty three. In twenty seventeen, I live in Craven County, uh, New Bern, North Carolina. In twenty seventeen, and have been an appraiser, as I said, all my life. Uh, in twenty seventeen, they started a subdivision behind my house. The properties in there uh, were selling for the two hundred, two hundred and twenty five, and obviously you could go two eighty, depending on the size of the house and things like that. When we did our reevaluation in twenty twenty three, those properties had gone to four hundred thousand. It blew my mind, we used to track the uh, the cost of uh, sheathing at Lowe's. Because when I built my house, sheathing was seven dollars a board, when in the twenties, early twenties, it went to forty dollars a board. So that obviously takes the value of new construction and, and takes it uh, through the roof. It's just like the stock market, it goes up and down. So anyway, uh, this area right here is Scotland Acres. And it's, these are, uh, what I wanted to do is hit on uh, example of, of, of all, all type properties or, or residential properties. Double wide mobile home. Let's see. Uh, on Creed Road, built nineteen ninety four, uh, three bedrooms, two bath, one thousand seven hundred and eighty two square feet. That mobile home sold on, in May of twenty twenty five for a hundred and eighteen thousand. Currently assessed at twenty nineteen, scheduled values at thirty thousand, eighty dollars. So, given that, given the, the, the facts on the property. And again, this does not fit all properties, I want to be upfront with that, this is, they, they all go, but just to give you some uh, numbers. Uh, that's a two hundred and ninety three percent increase on that property. Mobile home, Lee Jane Road, built nineteen ninety seven, three bedrooms, two baths, sold again, May of twenty twenty five, hundred and ninety thousand. Current tax value fifty six, nine sixty, that's a two hundred and thirty three percent increase. This is a single family home, uh, McNair Road, uh, sold uh, June twenty twenty five, it's uh, was built in nineteen eighty six, below average quality. Three bedrooms, one bath, one hundred and ninety two square feet, it, it sold for one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, current tax value on it is fifty six thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars, and that's an increase of two hundred and one percent. So, in essence, I'm not trying to shock everybody, but I'm letting you know that the values are gonna come up, or, 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 or increase. It's depending on location, and obviously we hadn't finished uh, doing every neighborhood yet, but uh, in, in, in doing these meetings, and I'm dealing with uh, the commissioners here, but a lot of times in Craven County, I had to uh, do public, uh, go in public neighborhoods and explain the situation. And I always like, because people don't understand it, that it doesn't really matter what your value does, obviously, it, it does in some respect, because no one likes to pay taxes. But, your house is gonna, in a normal setting, is gonna appreciate in value. But when you're talking taxation of that house, there are a lot of parameters that go into it, and one of them is the tax rate itself. And so a lot of people, I know, uh, when I would give uh, uh, the talks in the neighborhoods, I would always get the finance director up there to explain exactly what uh, the, the tax value uh, does on the property, because I know that most counties try to reach revenue neutral, but I don't think that really always happens, because you have different expenses increases throughout the uh, county budget anyway. Uh, so, but, there's checks and balances for it, so it doesn't mean if my property value doubles, that my taxes double. Uh, again, the current ratio is sixty eight percent, so those were extremes that I showed you, but just let you, or that I alerted you to, but just to let you know that they're out there.
But last reveal we have, like, six, seven years ago, so you mean, it couldn't forecast that? Had to be longer than that, because I've been here longer than that.
It was, it was twenty nineteen. And you know, in your last revalue, your property values dropped four percent.
That was it all in-house, when though, I think we did.
And uh, when I saw that, my mouth kind of dropped, but then I went to the state, now don't get me wrong, I have not reviewed twenty nineteen sales data. But uh, each, each year, the state sends the tax office, uh,
I believe about two hundred sales to do a ratio?
And uh, and they, what they do is they send the sale, they, they give them deed references, and you go in and you put what the price sold for and uh, the current assessment. And to get the ratio, you divide the assessment to the sell, or the sell price into the assessment.
You mentioned current data as being a basis for these uh, the schedule. What, what are you considered to be current data? What's the parameter on what's current?
Well, in some areas, I've had, in current, most uh, uh, closest to this date, if you, to this date. Uh, in some areas, I've had to go, go back to twenty four, because there's no sale data, data for twenty five. And uh,
Looking for the most recent comp?
Most recent sales, yes sir. In twenty twenty uh, four, I think Scotland County had four hundred sales roughly, four hundred, uh, four hundred and four uh, real estate transactions. So far in twenty twenty five, that number's four hundred and seventy five. Now that number's from uh, trill, trilia, trilia. Uh, right now, the median value in Scotland County is a hundred and fifty six thousand. I think it's got a ninety five percent list to sale ratio, which means if you list your house for a hundred thousand, you'd probably get ninety five for it. I don't really see the market, I see the market balancing, uh, you know, uh, pretty much, with interest rates have come down a little bit. But Scotland County is a, is a, uh, is, is a unique market, because it's, it's, I, I can see where like Deercroft is probably a retirement area, or, or, you know,
Yeah, we'll agree the values there, just.
Yeah, yes sir, no, no, without a doubt, but uh, you know, you have uh, around twenty, twenty one thousand, twenty one thousand parcels.
So, so I'd like to go back and ask you a question.
Yes sir.
You said, you said a while ago that, that we have no way of knowing the tax difference on a piece of farmland to wooded land. But we're, we're, we're charging the same per acre for farmland.
Well,
Would do wooded land?
Uh, I assume so, yes sir, I'll have to say yes sir.
Okay.
But, but let me, let me put something out there, it's a mathematical formula that's in the system. So I don't know what, somebody entered those pro, those, those multipliers. I'm forced to assume that whoever entered those multipliers knew what they were doing, and they still hold true. Now, okay.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, that being said, I hit an area that property was selling for five thousand dollars an acre. I changed that value, and I thought that, well, let me test this, and I tested, and it blew a property up way over here.
Right, right.
So that's the need to put things in neighborhoods, and to get them, uh, get them as comparable as possible. So I'm walking on thin ice.
Right, right, because you know swamp land shouldn't be worth as much as.
No, that's right, that's right.
Because, see, and I actually go by a program myself, which is rarely avail, I mean, pretty available. And it breaks it down, swamp land, the tree land, the, the grass, the, I mean, it breaks it all the way.
Yes sir.
And I'm just surprised that we're not using that.
Mm-mm, and uh,
Because it's, it's just out there everywhere, I mean,
Yes sir, I'm uh, I'm blessed in my career, the gentleman that did our GIS mapping. I could go to him and sit down and say, Lou, I need this information. We actually had it so it would uh, on farmland tracks, you're the highest and best use of the actual road frontage is a little bit higher than, you know, as you step back, because of, uh, obviously if it's out in the middle of nowhere, you have no development potential for it. But as it gets, as, as life or as, as building population expands, then that land becomes more valuable as a, as a development track. But it's usually only a frontage, and that's why when you run right through a rural area, you see houses dotted on farms, if you will, but they're on the road. A farm owner probably lives in one in the back, uh, but, but it would actually do that, and it would actually uh, break out that acreage, so we could value that at a different rate, if you would, so.
If I can interrupt for just a second, in our system, we, there is a way,
Mickey, get closer to that mic, so the people online can.
In the BiTech system that we have, it does calculate different values on different types of properties. The, the struggles that we are having is when we come to our GIS, differentiating between what is farmland, or what is wooded, or, but the, the formulas are in there to differentiate, differentiate between the types of land that are there, they are there.
That's what I was saying about it.
Yeah, okay.
So you've mentioned an example from a sale in May of twenty twenty five. How does that say, that recent sale impact evaluation? Does the recent sale impact it, or is it still measured against other sales across that neighborhood?
The target, it, well, other sales across the neighborhood.
So if this house sold for two hundred thousand, but the average in that area was one eighty, would their average more likely come down to one eighty?
Well, Believe it or not, the ha, the, the program has, if you have, what would generate a house to sell for more would probably be a higher quality. And that's adjusted in, in thing, but you're absolutely right, you do, you, you know, in a neighborhood, if you have a truly comparable neighborhood, and you have your ratios in there, then, then obviously, I'm conservative, so I don't want to go a hundred, over a hundred, if you will, so I try, you try to make it so those ratios fit, if you will, and uh, in the, in, you take a, what the computer does, there, you know, nobody figures it out by hand anymore. Uh, what the computer does, it takes a, a, a median, it gets a median number. And then you have a, uh, two, two multipliers, not multipliers, but checks on, on the, the, your data. Is a coefficient of dispersion, which how far does that data separate from the median? And uh, and then you have a, uh, I can't think of it right now, a PR, price-related differential, which lets you know your level of assessment in low-cost properties versus high-cost, high-cost properties. But in, in uh, in the perfect world, you have your neighborhoods grouped accordingly, because a neighborhood, it can be uh, a small cul-de-sac with duplexes on it, that can be a neighborhood. And then you're drawing your sales data strictly from that neighborhood, if there is any sales data uh, to draw from, if not, then you have to go outside, obviously, and uh, and try to find a comparable, comparable area like that, but yes sir.
Can the system pick up that people have uh, tree farms and stuff like that, with the tax, what is different?
Well, I think uh, the way you would do that is that, uh, hopefully, uh, obviously the state has a present use value program. Uh, that would be a way uh, to pick, to, to pick, pick out there.
Taking advantage of that, Mickey? Because I know when you talk about those two different values between timbered land and not, you have a minimum of ten acres, you can go in that program, and your tax rate drops to very low on that section, but you still have the other open land sections, tax different.
Well, you can, uh, if, it depends on what meets their application, you're, you're correct, sir.
What else do we need to do on this tonight?
So, um, I put in front of you a um, schedule that would lead us to what do we do next? And so, uh, of course, it was important to present this tonight, and you had in your packet, the schedule of values. And so our next step is, once we leave this meeting, um, people should know that this is already available for anybody in the public who wants that, and it is a, I think, two hundred plus document. We will provide that to them in an electronic form, or paper form if they like, but that is available at our tax office now, and will be available at our county office, so on Covington or Peanose Street now. Our next step, um, we will publish a, for a public hearing, and the requirements we are to do to come back to your December first meeting, where you can have your public hearing, and then you can adopt your schedule of values. So that, that would be our immediate next steps.
Can I ask John or Mickey to email us, the board members, that packet now, so we have it, because we're gonna get calls. The schedule of values, the two hundred page, don't try to print it, just email it to us. And I will say this, thank you, sir.
Yes sir.
You know, about, um, and I'll use my personal experience with the Eagle View, you know, it's not a hundred percent foolproof. You know, it found a wall on my house, it been there since nineteen forty eight. But, anyway, it wasn't on the tax card, right? But it also said I had a concreted driveway, and it wasn't, it was gray rock. So, I mean, you watch these things as they come out, especially on your own property.
Sir, if I may, the public has a lot, and I'm speaking from experience, it's at stake here. All it takes is a phone call, you wouldn't believe the houses out there to have trees going through the roof. And people are paying taxes on it. And all they have to do is pick up the phone call, tax office, say, somebody needs to come look at this.
Right.
That's it.
Well, and, and that leads to another couple of compliances, and that I took to her was uh, these outbuildings that people put at their house. They always put them at the back of the lot, right, as far back as you can get. And there was two of them, that it was so far back, it was actually on the property next door. And the system picked up and sent those people the bill for that building, rather than the one that it owned. There was two cases of that, and, and then that was just in that little area that I had. And, and I can imagine countywide how much that goes on, because most people put them as far back as they can put on the lot. And if that thing picks it up, that you're, it's on the other lot, then they're the ones getting billed for it, unless they're not watching for that, so, anyway, that's just my two cents.
What are you seeing in terms of reevaluation timeframes? I know we wait, I guess, what, seven years to reevaluate, I know by law you have to do it eight. What are most counties doing?
What's the current trend in terms of reevaluation?
I think a lot of them are going to four.
A lot of them are going to four, it's, and, and something that's, that's misunderstood. Actually, the more often that you do a revaluation, the better that it is for the taxpayers. It just is, because you're, it's more stable, rather than you wait eight years and a tremendous jump and whatnot, it's more stable the more often that you do it. So it just, it just is.
Well, it's gonna be a cost, if you do it every four years, that's another cost.
It's not a dramatic jump, though, is, is what we're gonna have. It's not, it's gonna be a dramatic jump, but in, in some counties, they have that problem where they do it every two years or four years or whatever, I mean, Brunswick County, that last one they did just went nuts, and.
Carter, Carter County?
Yeah.
And, and they had, uh, you know, and I'm, I'm very familiar with that, they had a big problem, uh, again, with their data. That's what, that's what it was.
Right, right.
You know, it's, it's tough. It's tough in your position, because if people don't like taxes, you're gonna hear about it.
Oh yeah.
As I said, when I was working the field as a, as a tax appraiser, uh, going to someone's house unannounced, I never was comfortable with that, I mean, because uh, you're, you're imposing on them, if you will. And uh, but I'll, also as I progressed, and with my knowledge and everything, and I learned that, it's not bad, because you, I would, when people would hear that their tax value would double, as an example. They may get mad, but the truth is, if you understand the system, you know, uh, there's a tax rate, there's a multiplier involved. I think right now, You know, uh, there's a tax rate, there's a multiplier involved. I think right now, y'all's tax rate is ninety-nine cents per hundred. There's a good chance that'll come down.
Probably a lot.
Well, and I think that's, when you were talking about revenue neutral, that's what Brunswick County shot for and dropped the rate quite a bit. Uh, when they did that last one, but the values went way up too, so.
It sounds like, though, our data cleanup is gonna be exponentially better after this reevaluation.
It, it will. Uh, when we did, when we visited the commercial and industrial properties, we did a full list to measure on. So we corrected a whole lot of data, and it's easier when you're there on the ground to do it. It just is. Uh, so we fixed a whole lot. So. We, I'm saying all of us, we are ahead of the game in having done that. So, right now, the residential's, the next time around, it would be great to visit those properties and correct a lot of data on the ground.
Cause I figure if you correct those things, and then you come back in four years or at some point in the future. You have less new items found. Whereas in this reevaluation, there's probably gonna be a lot of new stuff.
Absolutely.
That'll be discovered, so that the difference in increase will probably be far less.
Sure.
Because your data is.
Uh, that's all we need to do on that, right?
We don't need to take any action.
Alright, has anybody else got anything? Thank you all. We appreciate it. Mickey, Mickey, send that to us tomorrow, or John, whoever, whoever wants to send it. Alright, next is our Health and Human Services Board Training, Ms. Ne.
Okay, so, um, we've been talking a good bit about their Health and Human Services. You are the Health and Human Services Board now, as of November first. And so, uh, part of the accreditation process and requirement to keep your accreditation for public health. Is that all board members have to have some training. And so, uh, these are two options for you. I did them both myself, and so, um, they are online. You can go online, I'll send this out to you. You can go online and you can view these. I think each took me an hour, just over an hour, so it's nothing, um, two, two. Time constraints to have for those. One of them even gives you a certificate of completion, whi- which would be excellent. Because we have to prove through the accreditation process that every board member has been trained, and so I'll send these out to you.
How often do you have to do that? Every year or?
Um, that's a good question. I think once. I think it's just once. Um, because it's, it's some pretty high-level data. Well, the new board members come on having to do, but once you've done it, you, you've done it, because the information is pretty general about. What the role of a board member is, what a public health department does. So I'll send this out. Uh, I also wanted, just to give you an update, um, what Ms. Holland is working on, hopefully to bring back to your December first meeting. Is bring you back a, um, proposed rules of procedure for the. Health and Human Services Advisory Committee. Now, that's not this board, now we're talking about their committee. But to bring you back, um, rules of procedure for that, uh, between now and then, she will be reaching out to all of the currently. Serving Health Board and DSS Board members to see if they want to come over to the Advisory Committee. And, uh, so we might even begin to have a list of who's gonna be on that committee. I did, uh, note, when I was doing some of this training, you do need a commissioner on your advisory committee. So, um, you all don't have to take action on that tonight, but you can think about it. I think our plan.
You're it now, right? It, it wouldn't just roll over?
Well, there, there's two.
Oh, that's right, there's two.
Okay, then, if you could be the one rep on the consolidated board if you wanted to be.
Was there any reason we can't have two?
Uh, nothing says you can't have two.
Yeah, I mean, you could have two, but, yeah, I don't think you necessarily need to.
So, you, well, you all can think about that, uh, as we get closer. And we are hoping the goal for the Advisory Committee's first meeting would be in December. And so, then they, as they come together as a group, can understand their role, and they can decide when they want their meetings to be. During the day, at night, whatever they want. It, it's their committee, so. That, that's just me giving you an update that, on that, as things come together. But I will push this training out. Uh, I will definitely send you the one at the top, or give you some information about which one shows that you had it, because there's a ti- certificate to print out.
I tell you, I did, there's five modules, and I did the last three the other night, and it took about an hour and a half. So it's not bad, and you go to the end of it, you answer some questions, and you can print a certificate. You type your name into it. Um, really not that bad.
Can I make, th- this is not about this. Paula, um, Paula. There's a training that you have to do with that ABC Board too, that ethics training. You've got, okay, I just, that just went through my head, because the state's real strict about that, and they'll throw you off. Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Your training? So. I, I think it's in our best interest, if you have that done, probably by January. But it, we're in an odd place, because we're right in the middle of accreditation, and so. Uh, what I'll call the pass board of health should have all been trained, and so that should have all been submitted. But we don't know if the HHS will come in and say, and now your new board needs to also be trained for this current accreditation. Yes, sir, I, I'll be, I'll send it out tomorrow, and if anybody needs help getting it set up, or wants to do it at our office, we'll, we'll be glad to get it set up. Yeah, if you want to do it as a group, w- we'll do it, whatever is easiest for you all. Alright.
That it? Alright, next item is the Animal Control Ordinances, Commissioner O'Neill.
So, um, we've had a couple of conversations, um, as a group around, uh, dogs. Out of control. We had an individual out near Hoffman, who was bit or attacked by a dog, a young man. And then most recently, there was a case, we were over here last Thursday, where a dog left its yard, went to a neighbor's yard. Killed the neighbor's dog. And then Animal Control, of course, was called out, and the response was. To basically tell the owner of the dog that had killed the other, hey, you have to have a stronger enclosure to keep your dog in. So they actually housed the dog for a few days, let the owner build a stronger enclosure, and they were done. So, it sounds like the problem was taken care of, but imagine if you were the one who owned the dog that was just killed, right? So I really, I, I tell this story only to say, I think we have ni- twenty nineteen ordinances for animal control. I think it's time to take a look at them, and make sure that we have sanctions and processes in place. That are fair to both owners and people who may be the victim of an attack by a dog, or have their. Their pet killed, or maimed, or whatever it might be. The other thing is, I don't think, in talking with this animal control officer, I don't think he feels like. He has the authority that he needs based on the way he has to do exactly what the ordinance requires. And he believes there's more that we could be doing. The owner whose dog was killed called the Sheriff's Department, so there's a potentially criminal element to this.
It is.
If you look at, you failed to control your pet. So I think we ought to also, working with the Consolidated Health and Human Services Director. Bring in a veterinarian, bring in a, somebody from law enforcement, bring in somebody from the shelter. And let's see if we can craft an updated policy that actually does what we need it to do, right? Just to give you an idea of the scope of the problem, I mean, we're talking about seven hundred. Dogs taken in each year. So, this is a significant issue that affects a lot of people. Just like we talk about trash on the highway, people will talk about feral dogs, dogs out of control, wandering. All that sort of stuff. So, what I'm asking from my fellow commissioners is that we. Let the Policy Committee work on this with the Director of Health and Human Services, and let's see if we can. Get this policy updated, based on what other counties around the state are doing, what's best practice, right? I'm also convinced we don't have enough shelter space. And I think shelter space is a huge part of this. The animal shelter is back up now, it's been back up, I guess, about five days. And, uh, they're taking animals again, but have we identified overflow capacity? When they can't take any more animals, and we need them to. Um, and then, uh, Commissioner Brazil has brought us this idea of people bringing in hunting animals from outside the county. Could our ordinance also set some conditions so that we know when people are bringing dogs in? They're properly vaccinated, tagged, controlled, all that sort of stuff, right? Because sometimes these dogs kill livestock. You know, they attack other animals on, that may be owned by that landowner, or they're just running free, right? So, I think we need to, we need to focus on this. I think the public expects us to, to do something with it. And I think we can make our animal control function work better.
Okay, so the Policy Committee needs to set that to get together. I don't even know who's on the policy.
We look at ordinances, our county staff work on those, and then once the county staff. That have input into ordinances, then they take it back to the Policy Committee.
Okay, alright, well then that's, start that process is.
Because it takes quite a lot of time to, oh, to pull ordinances. Ordinances are thirty pages. Where a policy might be two pages, and it takes quite a lot of time to.
And then we have to get legal to review it to make sure we're.
But I think I would like to get this on our radar, so that our, at every board meeting, we're telling you where we are. Because we've talked about this, every time somebody gets bit, or an animal gets killed, it becomes kind of the important thing. And then it goes away after a little while.
It's kicked right down the hallway.
Yeah.
Well, you, you had charged.
But we talked about animal control officer. And the difference is, when I had at the city, was not just an animal control officer, he was a certified police officer. So he could go and charge you, he could write you a citation. You know, he could take you to court for any type of civil penalty. Our animal control officer is not a sworn police officer.
But they can do civil penalties.
They can do the civil.
But it could also be criminal if the Sheriff's Department's called. So like, if the homeowner calls the Sheriff's Department and says, hey, this is what happened. And I think the animal control officer in this scenario called a deputy. So the deputy came out, and now you have the civil process, and you have a potentially criminal process. Going at the same time, and I just don't think we're, because I'll tell you, if I was the owner of the dog that was killed, I'd feel like. That guy had to buy a stronger cage. How does that make me whole?
What about replacing your dog?
Yeah, exactly. So, and, and I'm not finding fault with either one, as much as I'm just saying, here's the situation, where I think it's hard to. Do right by either party.
Alright, thank you, sir. Just, uh, just out of curiosity, you told me the other day, but I, I, I've, I've done forgot what you said. How many cages do the county get in that facility, the Humane Society?
So April, you'll have to help me with this.
Yeah, when I, I try, I'm trying to remember, I'd have to fo- pull that agreement out. I wanna, it's X number of dogs and X number of cats, and I wanna say it's like. Between five and ten. It is not a lot at any given time. Uh, but I also understand our, our Humane Society has a contract for overflow purposes. And I'm not sure that we're, that they are using that contract for overflow purposes. So that may be, and that's new information to me, very recently, so that may be something we might need to track down that. That, that, they also have another outlet to help send animals to, when they're full.
Just to give you an idea of the scale, it says, Humane Society Youth in Asia, dogs, two hundred and eighty-five, this is for one fiscal year. Cats, two hundred and thirty-three. Now, I don't know if that's from everybody countywide, or is it just what we take over? Because seven hundred and ninety-six dogs were impounded by us to the shelter. So, anyway, we've, there's a lot to do here, and, uh. We ought to get on it before, I tell you, my worst case is that, that would have been a child playing in the backyard with a ball. Instead of another dog. And now somebody gets maimed or killed, this dog weighed a hundred and eighty pounds, according to the. So, I can just see a lot of things coming from that, so.
That sounds more like a cow. That's a grown one, boy. Anyway, alright, thank you, sir. Uh, next is, uh, Board Appointments, Commissioner Brazil.
Okay, so I'm gonna start this out with a motion. And we're gonna start at Parks and Recreation Board, Advisory Board. And, so we got three openings on this, uh, this month, and the three I'm gonna pick here is gonna be, appoint. It's gonna be Robert McFatter, it's gonna be Benjamin Dickerson, and Lori McCullar.
Now, that, that, you, you say that's three this month, so I said, there's three more coming up in next.
Uh, next month, that's correct.
I'm on that board, so I know, I know Robert and William Tripp. Is William up or? He's on there with me now, Mr. Tripp.
I got the check to see how many times he's been appointed.
He, he popped in there. I can't give you that answer.
You're, I thought he was off too. I, I thought he took, I thought he took a break.
I think he had to.
I still got the check, and then, then, then I made a point him on the next month, at the next month.
Cause you've got, I believe, three more next month.
I, I know.
But, but, uh, but I do think that we will have to kick in our, uh, Commissioner exception for Robert Fatter. Because he has served two in a row, two in a row, and if we reappoint him, we're. We say two years, but we're allowed to extend that if we do that in, in the, in this. And I'm not, I'm, I would love for Robert to stay there, so, uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just saying we need to add that in maybe to the motion.
So he's, so he's been in that, uh, two terms also?
Yeah, but it, it don't matter. I'm just concerned with folks who are serving on that board, who are committed to kids. Committed to Parks and Rec, that's my only concern.
Policy that says you can't, you can't, uh, serve but two terms, though.
I got you, bro.
And, and, and we have to override that.
Maybe we should review, because we're struggling to find people to get on boards. If someone has enough passion, they.
Oh, I agree, I'm just.
I mean, but I think there should be some sort of out, if the person becomes a problem for that board, right? Or something like that, but otherwise, I don't see kicking people off just because of time.
Then, then we need to go back and change the policy on it.
I think we need to at least look at that.
Do we need to table this until the next meeting?
I think we ought to take it in the policy meeting, if that's alright, April. And, and look at that policy of board tenure. I mean, some are probably by statute or by some other rule, but.
They're just in your rules of procedure, that you all just revise those.
The only one we're looking at making an exception here is, is Roberts.
Well, but I think in general, you have people like Bear Hughes, who's been helping Optimus for thirty years.
Oh, I agree, I'm.
Someone told him after five, go away, look at what would have happened.
I think sometimes too, though, other people don't ever get a chance, if you continue to let people roll and roll and roll on the same board.
So let's find a way to split the bait.
Yeah.
I can agree with that, but you do want folks who are committed. Not just saying I'm on this board, uh, you know, you got a lot of folks that want recognition too, just say, I'm, I'm serving on this board, resume building. You want folks who are committed.
Agreed.
Let's see if we can find a way to do both, cause I agree with you as well, Rachel. If we put a man on the moon, we could figure it out.
Alright, but for the purposes of this, you've made a motion here to.
Yeah, I've made a motion already for Benjamin Dickerson, Robert McFatter, and Lori McCullar. Uh, and Historic Properties, Mark Jones, and the Planning and Zoning Board, Kent Jackson, Ken Jackson. I got a second on that.
I have a second.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Alright, County Manager reports.
Okay, uh, a few updates to start with. Our North Turnpike water line, so the bid for a contracting company is out. An informational meeting was held last week for any, um, construction companies who are interested in that. We did have a cou- oh, sorry. We did have a couple of sh- couples show up, uh, for the meeting. Uh, of course, they did not have to show up for the meeting. Uh, of course, they did not have to show up for the meeting, just to put in a bid, and so those bids, um, are due, uh, pretty soon. And the meet, or they're due by ten thirty and that's the meeting to open the bids to determine who will get the contract. Uh, at the same time, I've mentioned this before, the county was send let, now the county will send the letters out to all property owners along that. That stretch of North Turnpike Road. Uh, just giving them the information that this is going to happen. And that there may see like pipes laying on their easements. Um, but nothing that will be there typically overnight or for a long period of time, it's just information to them. And then finally, we are having, uh, two more outreach efforts in order to get people to pay their hundred dollar meter fee. Do it now, and so you'll see the dates are in there for, uh, November fifth and November sixth. At the Weygum Active Living Center, and those are different times of day, um, hopefully to accommodate people's schedules. Uh, our fuel facility, facility agreement with the City of Laurinburg. Um, the, uh, the agreement was in your packet, it is ready to sign, I've reviewed it. Uh, our county attorney has reviewed it, and of course, the City of Laurinburg has reviewed it and we are all ready to go, so. Uh, unless you saw anything in that, um, we will get that signed. Keep moving forward with that.
So do we need that action tonight?
Um. Do they, do they have to vote to enter that, or can they?
Yeah, I think, I think.
Okay.
Probably should.
Okay, well, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement with the City of Laurinburg for the fuel facility. We have a motion, do we have a second? Alright, motion and second, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Alright, this, that way we have it on record.
Okay. Um, so we've been talking about, uh, uh, public safety audit, and so that has begun with our nine-one-one and EMS. And I wanted to bring this back to your attention because the company is ready to begin that with the sheriff's office as well, if that is still your intention.
I don't know why it would have changed, do you?
Yeah, well, I, I didn't either, I'm just making sure we're, we're ready to move forward on that. A- and let you know, i- it will be time to move forward on that. Uh, the John Blue House, I believe I have a picture of that, that is from today. That is the John Blue House as it looks like today, Mr. Medlin reports. Um, he is finished, however, he's not quite finished, um.
You can see it from here, he's not finished.
Yes, uh, not quite finished.
Were we finished or not finished?
We are not, I would, oh, I'm going the wrong way, I would say not finished. Uh, the ramp was put up last week, uh, as you can see, a lot of the railing is up, that was not up the last time we talked last month. We did, uh, Mr. McGirt had to go out last week because, uh, as county maintenance was weatherizing inside the home. They came across a leak in the roof. And so, um, they, in conjunction with the roofer who was not Mr. Medlin, are working on that too, to make sure we can get that problem fixed.
But I mean, you can see the gingerbread on the bottom down there, it's not even done.
No.
Um, yeah, so.
So, uh, a- and again, bring this to see if there's any different action to take, other than keep on keeping on like I am. Uh, and one of my next steps too is, um, I'm gonna call Mr. McGirt and Mr. Milligan together, our chief inspector. Uh, it's time to take out our scope of work for this project and literally look at it like a checklist to see what is really left that is not completed, um.
When was the original deadline?
January.
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 And we're what?
About January again.
That's right.
Roof leaking?
Yeah, but now, he wasn't contracted to do any roof work.
He, he didn't put the roof on.
What was the deadline on the roof?
I don't know when the roof was put on, that was a different project.
The roof was put on your. That, that don't have nothing to do with this project.
Nothing to do with this.
Does he know when he's gonna finish?
Don't ask that, it makes it go out six weeks.
When in next draw, the next draw?
Not till when he finishes.
What do you mean the?
When does his next draw is payment?
Oh, we're not, we're not paying anything, um, until it's finished and it has passed inspection.
Right.
That, that's the way you handle it.
That's the way he handles it, that's why.
Yeah, and we have it.
Is it Historic Properties who has sort of the interface with him, or is it us?
It is, it is us, we are, we entered the contract with him, yes, now Historic Properties does interface with him.
Could he come in next meeting and? No?
Uh, I'll, mm-mm, I'll, I'll tell you later.
I'm just thinking about this punch list, cause I think Duke's question's a fair one, you know, you say it's finished, what's left? Well, finished means nothing's left.
Right.
And, we need to see that punch list at some point and.
Well, and that's why, that's why Mr. McGirt and I and Mr. Milligan pull the punch list out.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying.
Him coming in is not the.
Pull the punch list out.
He's trying to keep the peace.
No, it ain't that, not in that case, but it, it, you know, you control that purse string. And until it's finished, you ain't getting paid.
Right.
So, um.
Well, that's where we are, that's what we're doing.
So, and it ain't fin- it ain't finished and you're sitting there, you can see it from here where it's not finished.
Well, it's finished, but not.
And he has done an excellent job, don't get me wrong, he's done an excellent job with what he's done with. But it's way past the time of this being done. And believe me, we've addressed this a hundred times and, and.
Well, and your only other recourse i- is to use the provision in your contract to charge, start charging him by day. That it's not finished, and that it was written into the contract.
We talked about that, but we decided not to.
I, I'd like, I'd like to have a deadline on when he's gonna be finished.
I mean, I, I'd like to have a, a true deadline, when are you think you're gonna be finished?
Once we have a punch list, I think it'll be easy to set.
Well, I, I, I've done these things, I've done all these things, and, and you know, all we have at our disposal is not to pay him, and we are not. And he has been given deadlines, like I've done all these things. Um, the list will not be finished until our inspector goes out and says it is finished. And only, you know, only our inspection department can do that, so. Uh, I mean, I, I, i- if there's other things to do, I'll be glad to do those as well.
What percent do we owe him at this point?
Probably eighty percent, probably eighty percent.
A lot, I think he's only turning one invoice the entire project.
I guess I'm just thinking how we would treat any other vendor or contractor.
Well, usually.
Would we do the same thing, you know?
Usually after the deadline, you, you hire somebody else to come in and finish it.
Nah, I just go, I, I built my house in the deadline. I built my house in the deadline with the contract. If I don't have the keys by this date, you gonna start making the house look. It's a deadline, a deadline is a deadline.
Yeah, I think we need, I think, I think he owes us some kind of a deadline, so hey, when is it gonna be finished?
This, this will be like the fourth one.
But, but, no, this deadline, this deadline.
We've started the last three where that was.
But if he don't meet it this time, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say we'll get somebody else to price finishing it.
Well, I mean, i- it's close, it's definitely close.
Well, you got, at some point, he got to take us serious.
But, yeah.
He's not gonna take you serious until you look.
We've already told him that, that if he, that he would be fine these days, did we not?
Are we holding that?
Oh, yeah. He was told that.
He was told that.
No, the last meeting, I was told not to do that.
Right, so, yeah, if he take us serious, then we.
That's what I'm bringing him back up.
Right, so if you want, if you want to change that direction tonight, that's, if, if you want. I was gonna say, if you want a deadline with a date on it, and then say after that date, we will absolutely charge you debt by day, cause I think that's.
Can it be finished in thirty days?
It can be finished tomorrow.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
It can be finished tomorrow, if he put up, if somebody besides just one person will go out there and work on it. And, and.
Then let's just say one December, and anytime after that, we begin the penalty phase.
Yeah, but he.
That's thirty days to finish a day's work maybe.
Well, and you meet on December first, so.
So he's, he's still owed two hundred and twenty-five thousand?
So.
I mean, that's the remaining amount of the contract.
So.
And.
We're not gonna deduct anything from his original price for him having four deadlines.
Well, in some of that, the Historic Properties Board, look, he's done a lot of stuff out there that was not on that contract.
It was discovery work that he's gonna charge for.
No, no, he's not charging, he's not charging us for it, nope.
No change orders, nothing.
No change orders, nothing, he's going by the contract, but he has done a lot of stuff out there that was not in that contract.
There's been a lot of extra problems he's come across that he's had to address.
Did we have to buy pro-?
No, we have not had to spend one dime more than that contract. So that, that's some of the reason that he's been given some leeway. Um, but, but we're past that.
I got a question, I got a question first before you make a motion. How, how, so, so, so the, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna call it change order, okay? So the change order that he, that he's done, how much has that, how much time has that taken out of the timeframe of doing the job?
That, I wouldn't sit here, I couldn't tell you that, cause I, I, I can't do it myself, so I don't know.
I mean, you think that's took half the time?
He had to, he had to rewire under the kitchen back there, when he cut under there, it was all but on fire. Uh, from the wiring, from the heat and air unit, so he had to get all that redone, he's not charging for that.
Did he have to do any, anything to the foundation?
Yes, he had to add additional foundation columns than what's even in the contract. I think all the insulation on the house was on the ground, had to lift all that back up, and that was in the early stage.
And that's what I'm getting at, how much time has he put in to, to all this extra stuff? And is that, and is that part of the reason that?
I mean, it's, uh.
The, the extra stuff he's doing, does that justify the cost of the, of, of the deduction?
Oh, God, yeah, what he did, what he did to the foundation alone would have cost us another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I don't wanna say that out loud, but.
Then we need to sit still and let him finish.
Work that he's not being paid, he's not being paid for this other work, I mean, that's not really ethical on our part.
Yeah, I didn't know about this first time.
You know, he should be submitting a change order to say, hey, this was discovery work.
In the real world, that would happen.
I mean, that's the real world, and I, I don't, I hope it's not that different.
Well, that's, that's what you get with hometown, hometown work.
I understand.
He takes a lot of pride in what he does, and, and.
I can't do charity work.
So now I'm where Duke is, let's leave him alone.
That's what I've been preaching for six months.
Because in the future, if you do something at a fuel farm and somebody was doing extra work, you would not expect this.
You oughta bring, bring him a sandwich.
Yeah, I, I, let's just get this one over the line and then, but yeah, I'm fine with the December first date, we, we don't need a motion for that. We've, ours already in the contract, so. Okay.
Alright, so where we standing at, we just gonna leave him alone?
December first.
I, I won't leave.
December first, December first.
Well, I don't, I don't leave him alone, but I'll keep on keeping on, wha- what I've been trying to do, so. Um. Let's, let's talk about EMS and their new building, um, that, that's a more positive thing to talk about. So EMS, if you remember, we got six point five million dollars to build a new EMS building, I don't think there's anything up there. Um, but I can't go back. And so, uh, we are at the point of the building where Alliance was hired to do the site study. They have done that, uh, and now we're at a point where it's time to design the new building. And so Alliance proposed that they would like to continue, uh, maintaining us, I guess, as a client. And they would oversee putting the bid out for an architectural firm, putting the bid out for a construction firm, we got to that point, and be a project manager. And so in joint discussions with Mr., um, Sampson and Mr. McGirt and myself and Mr. Milligan. We, we, we kinda put our finger on them and said, well, okay, if you were to provide that service, what additional cost would that be? And they came back at over seventy thousand dollars. Uh, it's not our recommendation that we need somebody to put bids out for us, um. Well, we can, we can write requests for proposals and requests for bids and, and we can do that ourselves. Um, and then of course, when we hire an architect and when we hire a contractor, they will have a project manager. Uh, and we have our own Mr. McGirt and Mr. Sampson and our own inspector who would be going out. So what we think, um, our recommendation is for us to put those bids out.
My recommendation is keep it under six and a half million.
Well, and, and, and we agree, and we know seventy thousand.
That's the amount.
Seventy thousand extra dollars that we would have for the building and furnishings versus.
That's one percent of a contract, that's a lot, that's a lot.
That's kind of an update and a check of approval for us to move on.
That's new furniture, ain't it?
That's exactly what I said. Uh, you will see, uh, it was in your packet, and I also put one at your desk today, or at your seat, Kratom seven. Uh, you will see a letter from the Board of Health, at their last Board of Health meeting. They have a concern about this substance, and you will see what they're asking for in the letter, and I, I'll let Mr. O'Neil elaborate on that because he's on the Board of Health.
Cause I don't have a letter.
Uh, I said it, yeah, I, I've got another one, here's one.
So, I brought this up a few months ago when we had an individual fall into, uh, the health department suicidal after using, uh, Kratom seven. So this is a synthetic substance that, um, is sold in a lot of the vape and smoke shops. It mimics op- the, the same effects as opioids. And, uh, it's sold as a health supplement, and sometimes people use it as part of their coming off opioids. But, um, it is a very dangerous substance, so I, I talked to Danny Britt. And, uh, asked him, I said, hey, has any legislation been put together to try to outlaw this or control it in some way? And he said it passed in the North Carolina Senate, but failed in the House. So, I took that back to this board, they felt like they wanted to write a letter. Um, I talked to Garland Pierce, um, a few days ago, and, uh, he said he'd be willing to get involved with this. But I think the conundrum for us is, as a board is, if we made a rule, let's say that Kratom seven could not be sold. In our county, how enforceable is it, is it legal, who's gonna enforce it? You know, is the Sheriff's Department or Police Department gonna do it, what about online purchases? So, I think we ought to work with Garland Pierce, you know, send this letter with a endorsement from this board. And ask him to see if he can, you know, initiate some sort of effort in the House.
It, it may come better in, i- i- if whoever were to write a board resolution to that effect.
Yeah.
And send it, and send it to the whole, um.
Attack on top of this, forward it to Garland Pierce and Danny, so they can both get their separate houses engaged. But, the other challenge is zoning, we don't control the city's zoning, so. The store they're really concerned about is the one right across from the high school, right?
That's the city.
That's the city, so, you know, a lot of times, um, these convenience stores are even selling, you know, some of these substances, so. I, I'd ask that we adopt a board resolution in support of the Health Department recommendation and forward that to our, um. To our representative Garland Pierce and also to Danny.
And also include in that, with it being across from the high school, underage folks who are not of age being able to buy and present.
Yeah, and see, I don't know if, um, ALE and others.
They probably have with the city, they probably got them coming in trying to do something.
Cause see, like for alcohol, they'll send in, you know, underage people and attempt to buy, they'll set up stings, but I've never heard of one. For something like this, and, anyway, I think the resolution is the way to go, um, and I'd ask for your support on that.
Is that okay to bring back on twelve one, and you all will have the resolution and can approve it, okay?
Absolutely, we'll work with, um, Amanda Holland and, uh. And then I guess the other thing is to talk to other health departments around the state and see what their strategy has been. Um, around these kinds of substances, cause Kratom seven's just one, there's a whole bunch of.
Yeah.
Stuff out there.
They changed the name every six months, eh?
Yeah, and then they compound them differently, and I guess there was a case recently where somebody made some overseas, it was shipped in and killed a bunch of people. Uh, so, anyway, it's an important health issue and we'll keep working on it. So do we need a vote to do that?
I think we'll bring the resolution back and you can vote on that. Okay, um, everything that's going on with the feder- federal government shutdown, you know, Dr. Whittaker mentioned that. I thought it was a good idea for you to know how that's affecting the county and services that the county offers. And even what you have in your report that was sent out last week is already outdated, so. I, I'll run through those very quick, at the Health Department, our biggest concern is WIC funding. It's totally, um, federal funded, for the last few weeks, we've been told it would be funded through November fifteenth. And today we were told that will stretch at least till November thirtieth. Um, EMS, our EMS department, because we're in a tier one county, gets an additional three percent of revenue back on, um, Medicare claims, and so we have lost that additional three percent that has been, um, taken away, and, and we don't know how long that will be. Projections are, that's about thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, and that's a moving target, so that's, that's just an average of what it could cost if it continues.
But if they open back up tomorrow, we'll get it.
Yeah, yes, it, it's very likely to come back. It's just pause.
It's not like there'll be a hole.
In previous shutdown, Roberts, it, it came back, didn't it?
It did, and from what we're being told, that because of the nature of this shutdown, that if the reimbursement that you're talking about, if the federal government opens it, goes back up and that's included, then obviously we would get the back date.
Right.
But it's also very, it's very likely that it would have to be a separate, um, proposal to the federal government before those reimbursements.
Right.
Would, would have. Those are, those are two different scenarios.
And why are you all, what about veteran services?
So, so right now, our veteran services is not affected in what we can provide. We are seeing a few delays. If a claim has to get to the federal level, it hasn't stopped, but it has slowed down very much, so. Uh, it, no delay in the state claims, but when they get a certain point, they are slowing down. Uh, our Parks and Recreation Department has had to put a temporary hold on our housing improvement program, and that's when you commonly hear us talking about building ramps for people. Uh, unsure of the funding, and it's, uh, not guaranteed after last month, so it's best just to put a hold on that funding, or, or building those projects. At DSS, uh, our FNS actually changed today. Apparently there was a ruling that said, uh, states do have to provide at least fifty percent of FNS benefits. Uh, i- if you've been awake, you have heard that they were gonna stop for the month of November, but participants are gonna get at least fifty percent apparently, as of today. That was decided. Um, no other um, services at DSS are affected right now, so if you hear anything different than that, that, that is simply not true right now. Uh, and the only other one in the county right now is Soil and Water, and is where, uh, farmers could get a part, get, uh, some funding from Federal Conservation Storage Ship Program. That funding is on pause right now. So that across the county is how we're being affected. Um, your holiday luncheon, if that is something you would like to do again for your county staff, I have a few dates to throw out at you, that the Laurinburg Presbyterian Church is available. Uh, one of, the first decision I think you could make to narrow this down is, do you want it before Thanksgiving, which would be pretty soon? Or between Thanksgiving and Christmas? Okay. So the between dates are December sixteenth through the nineteenth, any of those days, and the sixteenth starts on a Tuesday. Nineteenth is a Friday, so, uh, we can get the fellowship hall any of those days. That work for you?
I think that Tuesday would be the better.
Yeah, sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen. I just wouldn't put it on Monday or Friday.
So we wanna.
I'm good with either of them dates.
Through the sixteenth, okay, and we have a committee. Miss Tyson has that committee for us, and they will be, uh, getting that planned, and uh, so if you have any suggestions, uh, give Miss Tyson a call for that. I, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't say we did have one department who suggested getting an additional, uh, hours of leave in lieu of having a holiday luncheon, so. Okay, um, this is just update. The county's beginning to re- review financial policies. Uh, you have not, to my knowledge, approved the finance policies of the county, unless it was something here and there, and so Miss Butler, in our new position, our goal is to try to do one a month, and so my question for you is, do you want those finance policies brought through your policy committee? And then to your full board, like we do personnel policies? Uh, h- how do you want those vetted before they come to your full board, or do you want them to come straight to your full board?
I think it should come through the policy.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Give people a chance to see it, and get some of the bugs out.
Who's on the policy? You?
Myself.
Bo and.
Duke and Bo.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, um, just as a reminder, we talked about this last month, November sixth, so I believe that's Thursday. Uh, there is a job fair that is being hosted by NC Works, only for Scotland County, only for our jobs, uh, to show off what we have. You know, we've got some departments who, uh, really struggle to recruit, and so, um, this isn't a, the end-all, be-all, answer-all, but this is a way that we can show off what we offer in Scotland County, and that is at the NC Works Center.
Well, we're on that topic. Did we get anything from the sheriff about any kind of hiring incentive, or?
I believe our sheriff met with our personnel director, our HR director, and so I assume maybe.
They working on it?
Maybe something is coming. And, um, I did meet with the town of Gibson and the town of Weygrom about a joint water application to DEQ. Both were very open. Both also have their own kind of projects and looking for funding things going. So I, I left it with both of them as we get closer to spring, and I, I am very confident Scotland County will be applying for some form of, uh, grant to assess our Cascades Water Facility, that, um, if they then still wanted to get in with that, we would reach back out with them, so, uh, they were open to that. And then water agreement with the city of Laurinburg, uh, that.
Is that not wager agreement? Is that what it says on there?
What?
It says wager agreement.
Oh, well, there it's, oh.
I was wondering what that was, okay. I was waiting till we got to the wager part.
No, no, typo. Uh, the water agreement, that expires this month, actually this week, but the city has agreed to let us stay under our current agreement until we can work out the, um, next water agreement. There are some things in there that, uh, the city and, or Mister Nichols and I both believe, uh, we need to update, and so we, as we talked about last week, we don't wanna do this quick. We wanna do this right, and so it's worth extending that out. One thing I do feel like it would benefit Scotland County to take out of that agreement and take on ourselves is the required water sampling contract for our water systems. We are in this, this, this odd design where we are responsible through DEQ for water sampling, and we are held responsible when that is not done, and we are violated financially. However, the city of Laurinburg holds the contract, so I can't call that company and say, you're paying for this violation. So if, the only thing we'd like to back out of and not hand over to the city, and they agree, is that water co- that water testing contracting. And, um, our tax department, Mister John Jorgensen, of course, is here, and so, uh, he's got some new ideas for the tax department. One, one, uh, idea he has, and, uh, our, uh, county attorney reviewed it, and I do think it's a good one. When people are delinquent and paying their taxes, they now get a, a letter, um, but it might not be the easiest thing to decipher. And so we have created a letter that you clearly understand you are delinquent on your taxes, and you will clearly understand our next steps as a county, if not paid by a certain date, and they get a copy of their tax bill, so it's just, um, maybe a little bit of, uh, extra customer service that we wanna put out there, so people are in no way confused about what's going on with that. Uh, my last piece of business on here for your consideration is we have the opportunity to lease our Dixie Guano piece of property. If you remember, we purchased that last year. That is where our, um, maintenance shop and potentially recycling center is gonna go. But we have been approached by a company who would like to only store equipment there. Apparently, they are doing something in the area, and it's a chance for us to make some in- income off a piece of property that we are not improving right now. Um, with your permission, I feel like I should talk a little more to this company, um, decide if we should enter that lease, of course, with our attorney's advice in reviewing any lease, and to make sure in the event we are ready to start improvements on that property, th- this would not interfere with that in any way.
Yep.
And.
Thank her to ask.
That is my report.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Um, County Commissioner news, we'll start with Commissioner Edge.
Ethan, Duke, Bo.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to talk about something. Um, so we had brought up in, in, in the meeting several times about the, uh, about the zoning for the subdivisions, and I was gonna catch Brooke before she left. I reckon she's gone, she's gone. Uh, where are we at with that? What is the, what is the progress with that?
So I spoke to Miss McQueen about this a couple of weeks ago, and there, uh, I was looking for Mister Dockery because he was on that committee too. So the zoning, um, board broke out a subcommittee to do that, and so I talked to her, they met two times, but I think, then I think it kinda plateaued. And so, um, I, I think maybe the idea of, of redoing all that entire ordinance felt overwhelming, and so I, I told Miss McQueen, let's pull them back together and explain, we don't need you to rewrite the ordinance literally, we need your input, and then we can actually do the revisions of the ordinances. So I'm hoping we're getting that back on track. If, if they can review them and say, you know, just point to edits, then we can do the hard work of rewriting for, for them.
Well, I'm sure everybody's looked at that. Uh, the, the ordinance on that is, is compatible with what's in Charlotte and Greensboro. I mean, this is Scotland County. We don't need Charlotte and Greensboro ordinance.
Right.
And, uh, so I, I think we need to really.
But like, for example, you know, if they don't think, uh, neighbor, residential neighborhoods should require curbing, right?
Yeah.
Then tell us that. Tell us you, you feel like we should take that out. Just point us to what ma- what would make these more friendly for development in Scotland County.
Alright, that it? Mm-hmm, you got it. Commissioner O'Neil?
Um, on the eighteenth, or excuse me, uh, on the sixteenth of October, we took, uh, thirteen veterans up to Fort Bragg, um, a hundred percent disabled, um, or military retirees to get new identification cards issued as required. Um, a great success. We went up there and back. Um, the Veteran Service Officer is enrolling people right now, or reserving spots for people who wanna go on our trip on, uh, December eighteenth, and we'll be going up there again. So if you know a veteran who's a hundred percent disabled, or a military retiree, and they do not have the new identification card, they and them spouse, their spouse can come on this trip. Scats provides a bus and a driver. We go to Fort Bragg, get it done, and get back here. We leave from the American Legion and return there if we're great last time, and we're gonna continue to do it about once a month, as long as we have the demand. Once the demand drops off, we'll stop doing it, but anyway, that's one thing we've been, uh, we're working on, and I'm pleased to see that it's working well. Um, I think I got everything else.
Okay. Commissioner Shelley?
Um, and I, I gave, um, County Manager Snead a card. I went to a, um, thing last night. Um, some of you may know this company, some of you may not. It's called Invictus Project, Project?
It's called what?
Invictus. Um, they deal with, uh, child trafficking. Sex extortion and everything. Um, they actually worked with our Sheriff's Department on a case this past March. They're basically based out, and I can't remember the four counties, but it's Forsyth, Guilford, up in that area. Um, I talked to the gentleman that actually started this, and, um, the, um, the statistics are absolutely incredible. I mean, it's, it's crazy. They, they told things where before COVID, most peo- most kids did not have their first experience with any kind of sexual activity or, uh, exhortation before fourteen. Now it's eight, and it's one every fo- every four kids. Um, so we are not, if we, if we think we are a little small town, a little county, we are not excluded from this people. And this is something I have a huge desire to, to work on, and, um, so I, I gave the card to, to Miss Snead, and the guy said he would be glad to come and talk to us. Um, they're a nonprofit organization, and they have a task force. His goal would love to have a task force in the east, the central, and the west, but, um, I'm telling you this so you guys aren't caught off guard next month if they're able to come. I told, I, I told him, what's coming tomorrow night? He said, I can't come tomorrow night.
Has he reached out to our law enforcement?
Well, he ha- he, he has worked with our law enforcement, and, and yes, um, but, a- and Duke, you know this. Local law enforcement don't have the resources. Th- this, this group, I mean, this is all they do, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, and, and I do think it ain't going away. It is not, and it's only gonna get worse. So.
Okay. Commissioner McFatter?
Uh, two quick things. Uh, November seventeenth at IJ at five thirty is the opioid, uh, what do I wanna call that, Dorothy?
Paced to Hope.
Yeah, I don't, I, thank you. I didn't wanna call it an event. I just, anyway, uh, but that is November seventeenth at IJ five thirty. The other thing is you probably should have all gotten the email about NACO again coming up in February twenty-first through the twenty-fifth. Um, if you're gonna go for sure, get Miss Tyson to book you, um, because you don't wanna lose your spot. You know, those go pretty quick, so especially the hotel spots, but, um, please make sure you're gonna go. If you get, you register, cause it costs us a lot to register, so, um.
That was just information.
That was just information. Alright, without, with that, uh, that will adjourn our meeting until December first, twenty twenty-five at six o'clock. There we go.
Fun.
Got a good one.
Hey.
Thank you.
Yeah, hey, that's why, that right there is why.
Is that called why?
No, it's hour ahead.
Oh, I didn't even know that, yeah.
We've been having water trouble at just my house.
She said go ahead and hit the floor.
Yeah.
So.
I just, yeah, and that's right.
That work.
I was gonna go ahead and hit the floor.